Okay, we're good. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Regent of attendance, Linda, you're good? Okay. Declarations of conflict of interest.
Okay.
Anyone? Okay. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions?
I need the approval of the agenda.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councillor Dawes. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Down to business. And we are at a public hearing. So, the idea of this evening is to hear the public, and there's a lot of public here for us to hear from. So, we will... Council will limit our... There won't be debate. We will just, if we have questions at the end, or anything, then we can ask those. I just want to set the ground rules so we understand where we are. First of all, welcome, everybody. It is great, believe it or not, to see a full house. Each person that comes to the microphone that wants to speak, you can speak once, and for five minutes, because there are a lot of people. And we will be speaking to the topic at hand, and each one will go through as we get to them. You can come to the microphone, state your name and your address, and if you're representing an organization, that would be fine, too. And last but not least, just everything in a very respectful manner, so that we can take everything in and go from there. So, I am going to open the floor to whoever would like to speak first. Oh, the first item is, "An application to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw, and particularly zoning map, Schedule A, thereby rezoning a portion of 126 Brunswick Street from open space to low-density residential, as outlined in the planner's report." Do you want to explain a little bit of that? Some facts? CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, this application is to bring the zoning line in conformity or in alignment with the property line. The town has sold some lots adjacent to 126 Brunswick Street, and including six feet of 126 Brunswick Street. When you sell property, or when you change a property boundary, you don't necessarily change the zoning boundary. And so, what is being proposed tonight, or under consideration, is to move the zoning line six feet to the east, so that it lines up directly with the property boundary line.
Thank you. Speakers? Oh, sorry.
Good evening.
Hi, Carol.
I'm Carol Weir.
Yes.
I live on Hibernia Street. Susan Hood had plans to visit with her mom in B.C. at this time, and she asked if I could read her presentation. "In April 2009, when I heard about the proposal for eight lots on Milton School property, I began to search the archives about Milton School. I wanted to know if there was anything worth preserving. Milton School and the playground were bought by the citizens of the Milton area, so their children would not have to go to England for schooling. Back in 1864, there was no school board, there were no provinces, we weren't even a country. They did it for their children and their future in this place. When I started to talk to the people who lived in the Milton area, I had no idea what they wanted. And after three and a half weeks of canvassing door-to-door, 1,247 people signed a petition and said they wanted to have Milton Schoolyard as a green space for all citizens to enjoy. If I had only gotten a half a dozen names, I wouldn't be fighting so hard for them. We've lost a great number of our young people to the oil rush and hard economic times. I've never heard a single person who has come to Yarmouth to live by choice say, 'I love those cute little duplexes.' They came because of the older homes which add charm and character to the town, and parks also serve the same purpose. Once the green space is gone, it's gone forever. Let's not lose it. When Winston Churchill was asked to cut arts funding in favor of the war effort, he simply said, 'Then what are we fighting for? You make your $17 million budget work for you, sell off the other 43 properties you have zoned for the plan the developer wants.' In June 2009, the citizens of the town presented a proposal for a green space park. We had a rally so people could share their vision for the space. No one said they wanted housing on that half of the land. In December 2009, we presented to council a plan for the entire space incorporating the ideas that people had, and at that time, we came to a compromise. Council did not take this lightly, nor did they rush through any agreements to appease the petitioners. And 13 months later, in July 2010, the town council voted, and it was passed. Number one, that the Milton School property be subdivided into three lots; that the footprint for the dwelling on Elm Street be 2,000 square feet; and that the two lots on Huntington Street have a living space minimum of 1,750 square feet, and the minimum footprint of 1,100 square feet. For four years, everybody was happy with the arrangement. The property was up for sale and would be developed according to the motions passed by council. January 30, 2014, at a special meeting of the town council, suddenly restrictive covenants Elm/Huntington Streets, moved by Councillor McCausick, seconded by Councillor Mooney, that the restrictive covenants for the Elm and Huntington Street properties be rescinded. Motion carried. On January 30, 2014, without notifying a single petitioner, the restrictive covenants were rescinded by town council in order for the land to be sold to a developer with the plan. What happened to our plan? At the last meeting with council march of this year, we were told that the council had changed direction. However, the people haven't changed direction, and what direction are we headed when it's against the will of the people? You were elected to represent our voice. We have spoken loudly and clearly, 1,247 voices, to be exact. Let's sum up. We petitioned for the whole parcel of the land, 1.8 acres. You said no, and we got half. We asked for two large lots to reflect the size of the properties surrounding them. We agreed on three. You changed your mind and made four. We asked for single-family dwellings, again, to reflect the architecture and size of surrounding buildings. You agreed. Now you say no. You changed your minds and now allow duplexes. And now you want another 183 feet by six feet, and have broken our agreements. It's our turn to say no, loudly and clearly, no, to the bylaw change. When reading the application to amend the land use bylaw to rezone a portion of 126 Brunswick Street, your Appendix B Implantation Policy 7.7, Section 2 states that the proposal is compatible with adjacent or nearby land uses and the existing development form in the neighborhood in terms of its use, height, bulk, scale, and lot coverage. Your report says it's compatible. It's absolutely not. The lot sizes on Elm Street are smaller than any in the surrounding two blocks. A duplex does not reflect the character of any of the houses around it in any way. Where is the democratic process? Let's see how it's been broken, by the council and the town officials. Betty Cleveland, who is the closest to the land in question, never received a letter on the amendment to the bylaw. She was advised by the neighbors of what was happening. We requested a postponement of the meeting, because we would be away. Betty requested the date to be changed, because it's Maundy Thursday, and she would be playing the organ for a church service. Some residents did receive a letter signed by Jeff Gushy, and I quote, "If you have any planning questions or comments, do not hesitate to contact the Planning and Development Office at 742-1505." This letter was dated March 28. There was no one in the department who could answer the questions, because the town planner had been fired. The town left people waiting for an answer to an alternative date, so it was impossible to phone or talk to the petitioners about what the town's planning to do. These situations are either intentional or incompetence at its best. Neither is acceptable. This is a travesty of the system you are supposed to represent. The sign on the land says it's been sold. I measured it, and it includes the 183 by six feet. We're having a public hearing after the fact. Let's have a referendum and see what the people really want for their future and their children.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Reverend Bill Newell, 124 Brunswick Street, right next door.
Welcome.
I am, first of all, reading a letter on behalf of Betty Cleveland, who couldn't be here, and then I have a few comments of my own, if I may.
Certainly.
To the mayor and town council of Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, dated April 15, 2014. I am most disappointed in the action that the Yarmouth mayor and town council have taken recently. I own property next to the proposed housing plan for the Milton School property, but I did not receive any notice from the town in connection with a meeting they called on March 27. A couple of my neighbors did receive notices and told me about it, but it was at a time I was unable to attend. I have no respect for those who broke the covenant made by council in 2010, and took action to offer the land to a developer to change the structure of the buildings to be placed on this land, and then to have the nerve to try and take another part of the land, of the parkland, to make a road. Then council called this meeting for April 17 at 7:00 p.m., which is the time for Maundy Thursday church services, or Holy Thursday church, depending on your tradition, and the reason that so many, including myself, are unable to attend. This night is very special in connection with Easter, as it is the night that Jesus met with his disciples in the upper room for the Passover Last Supper, at which time he was betrayed, leading to his supreme sacrifice of death on the cross for our salvation. We feel betrayed by the action of this town council. They have acted in an underhanded way, disregarding the wishes of 1,247 taxpayers and residents of Milton, who signed our petition in 2010, and want to break our covenant with them, which must have been recorded in council minutes. I vote a big no to this request for bylaw change, and want them to know that they have really let us all down. I'm Betty Cleveland. Personally, I'm told, I wasn't here, but I'm told that the solicitor, the Honorable Council, has said that this council is not legally bound by promises made by the previous council. I don't argue with him. That's his field. My field is morality. And while legally, you may have the right to do it, morally, I don't think you've got a leg to stand on. This council may not be bound, but you sure have broken covenant with the people morally. The type of housing, the size of the park, and whatnot. So therefore, I, again, would agree with Betty that it's a disappointment that this has been done. And again, while you may legally have the right, there was a time when people's word was their bond, when yes was yes, and no meant no. And while you may not always agree with the pre-yes council, you felt duty-bound to honor the commitments that they have made. Obviously, that is no longer the tradition, and I say it's a travesty and a major disappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. These are some signs I made. You can just kind of read them. There's one other. Art is kind of a release for me when I'm upset, so... This I found out this morning, what you see here, about the six feet. So, I was wondering why we were having a meeting, if the six feet was already sold.
My name is Doris Powell, and I live in Milton. First, before I start, let me make it clear that on behalf of the Milton School Committee, I sent a registered letter to the Town of Yarmouth Corporation on April 2, 2014. This letter outlined our requirements to have three separate and dedicated public hearing dates scheduled to address each of tonight's three major zoning changes, in order to give each of the potential changes the full consideration that they deserve. The town never responded to our registered letter. We, the committee who represented the views of over 1,247 people, we were not important enough for a response. The town did email me a copy of a letter addressed to my neighbors, Bill and Sue Hood, however. That letter did not respond to anything addressed in our letter. It merely stated that if Bill and Sue couldn't come, that they should mail in their comments. I finally had to call the town myself to find out that tonight's meeting was still even going on. So there was obviously no consideration of our needs as stakeholders of this corporation. This is a perfect example of the core issue that we are dealing with tonight. That is, the town's lack of consideration, accountability, and more importantly, trust. So I call my presentation tonight "A New Direction." I've been hearing a lot lately about the town's new direction. So what direction is that exactly? From what I've seen, in my opinion, it has been towards the subversion of truth, due process, accountability, transparency, family values, and common sense. The Town of Yarmouth and its council, whether knowingly or not, are going against the very values, strategies, and codes of conduct that it took an oath to protect. And I have proof. And I quote, "From the current Town of Yarmouth Municipal Planning Strategy, Chapter 3, under Residential Development, page number 10," taken from the Town of Yarmouth's own website. Number one, "To protect the nature and character of existing residential areas from unrestricted commercial or industrial encroachment..." So what about Milton's property values? Are we being protected from encroachment? "Allowing four duplex rentals is a willful and systematic destruction of our current property values." Also, these are four duplex rental units we are talking about. Isn't that a commercial venture for this developer? By promulgating these four duplex rentals, the town council is actually undermining the town's own tax base and setting in motion a limited form of developmental sprawl. Number two, from your information, "To regulate the location of new residential development to ensure efficient use of public infrastructure as a means of maximizing returns while minimizing expenditures." Is this really an efficient use of our public infrastructure? Four more low-rise duplex rentals, where there's a known glut of empty and unrented housing in our area, and the town is actually currently looking to dispose of upwards of 50 surplus rental and otherwise derelict properties? Where's the list, Jeff? I've been calling. I haven't gotten the list. I've been waiting for that list. Who in the world is coming here to rent these low-rise duplexes? Oh, that's right, the seniors. That's right, seniors' paradise. Isn't that what I heard? To go live in an Agenda 21 low-rise duplex? Is that your idea of paradise? Where families... Where are the families in this picture? I don't see them. Number three, "To encourage home ownership and low-density development of existing service lots on local classified streets and medium and high-density developments on collector and arterial classified streets when such uses are compatible with their surroundings." These are rental duplex low-rise units. They're not privately-owned, single-family homes, so they are definitely not compatible with their surroundings or the local streetscape. Number four, "To encourage the upgrading of substandard residential structures through private and/or public redevelopment projects." Whatever happened to the repurposing of old buildings and that one brick thing that you guys used to talk about? You remember the one brick? Yeah. This is a brown soil project, which, according to your own mandates, is to be avoided. What you're doing is called spot zoning. It is destructive, and it ruins property values. To me, these duplexes are about pigs feeding at the trough, or what some would call make-work projects. Creating artificial needs so tradesmen can get some work, town council gets some votes, and then more tax money. While due to your shortsightedness and lack of thinking things through, you're actually creating a scenario where you're going to get less tax money in the end. Because if you allow these duplex houses on that land, I personally will be suing the Town of Yarmouth Corporation for the $150,000 or more that my house has depreciated overnight, and I will start subtracting it from this year's taxes. My neighbors will be following suit. The appraisers, or my appraiser, is a phone call away, and he may be very busy this year. So if you follow through with this plan of the allowance of four duplex and the annexation of the six feet of our park, you will be reaping what you have sown, and that is the seeds of Milton's destruction. You will be setting certain things in motion, will not be able to be undone. Think hard about what you are doing and its long-term implications. The corporation known as the Town of Yarmouth and its council, as far as I'm concerned, are off of their oaths. You have proven to be secretive, non-transparent, with secret meetings, et cetera. And based on tonight's turnout, not all in touch with your constituency. There's an old saying that the path to hell is paved with good intentions. Well, we're there. Why does everything have to be developed and messed with? Nature has its own wisdom. Leave it alone. We want it green just the way it is. In time, there can be trees, there can be benches, or not. You want to pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Whatever happened to do nothing and do no harm? So in conclusion, we, the Milton School Committee, demand a referendum for the entire 1.8-acre piece of land as a park in order to restore the public trust in the commons. Rescind the subdivisions and residential zoning changes made against our will in 2009 and again in 2014. Designate the land in its entirety back to a public park in perpetuity, so that we may begin constructive efforts to repair and heal the wounds sustained by the community of Milton once and for all. Please, restore the public trust.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Just a quick question. Mrs. Powell, the referendum, I assume, would involve all of Yarmouth, correct?
Yeah, fine. The more the merrier.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Yes.
Good evening, Your Worship, and elected councillors. My name is Brent Halliday, and my family and I reside off Huntington Street. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to voice my family's concerns over the project that is being considered and/or initiated jointly on Huntington and Elm Streets. Let me begin by stating that I truly believe in progress and fully support it if it does not infringe on the rights and pursuits of others. Does the town council consider Yarmouth, at the present time, economically downturned or economically depressed area? No nodding heads? Yes, no, maybe? Item 15 and item 30 of the town council meeting highlights from Thursday, March 20, 2014, suggest that we are very much in a depressed economic zone, both in housing and financially. Item 15 states that correspondence be sent to the Minister of Service, Nova Scotia, and Municipal Relations, explaining the concern over our inability to dispose of surplus properties below market value, and inquiring if there are any imminent plans to amend the MGA, the Municipal Government Act, to address the issue. So that, to me, suggests that there is, you know, a downturn here. My next question is directed towards Councillor Mooney. Councillor Mooney, do you recall the telephone conversation you and I had approximately three weeks ago?
I sure do.
Concerning the lots situated on 26 and 22 Huntington Street and 11 Elm? During our discussion, stated to me that two duplexes, each containing two rental units, were going to be built on these lots, and they are intended as higher-income housing. For all intents purposes, we are in an economically depressed zone. I guess my next question is, how you or the council as a whole substantiate the sale of these properties to a developer under the guise of a higher-income housing?
Do you want me to answer that, Your Worship, or not?
If you care to answer it, certainly.
I consider higher-income housing when the rents exceed $1,000 or more a month. That's why I consider high-grade housing.
Okay. And in this area, where there's not a lot of jobs, and there's probably, what, maybe 20% of the population here make enough to substantiate that kind of a rental payment? It just doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry. Is this development intended to increase the tax base for the town? Next question, just touching on what she said. So have you considered the loss in revenues from a lowering of the assessed values of the surrounding homes? And I base this question upon the information obtained in the following citations. "The Rental Next Door: The Impact of Rental Proximity on Home Values," published in 2012 by Wendy Usri. "And Journal of Planning Literature: Does Affordable Housing Detrimentally Effect Property Values?" by Mai Tai Ngueng, and that was published in 2005. And I will forward you the links as soon as I'm finished speaking. You can check it out at your own time. Mr. Gushu, did the councillors and the mayor sign their statement of commitment to the Everybody that's here should have, within seven days, required to. Well, I just want to quickly review some of the guidelines, and more specifically, under Section 2 of the Standards of Conduct, subsection B, and Section 4, Member Responsibilities: Conduct to Be Observed. Standards of Conduct. B. Perform the functions of office truly, faithfully, and impartially to the best of their knowledge and ability in accordance with the following core values. Integrity: Giving the municipality's interests absolute priority over private individual interests. Has this been done? Possibly. Honesty: Being truthful and open. I believe that hasn't been done. Objectivity: Making decisions based on a careful and fair analysis of the facts. A careful and fair analysis of the facts would mean somebody would come to my door and ask me what I think about somebody building a rental unit 150 feet from it. Member Responsibilities of Section 4, Conduct to Be Observed. Members, which are you, are agents of the public whose primary objective is to address the needs of the citizens. We are the citizens. I will reference one more item before I close. It is item 4 from the town council meeting highlights from Thursday, March 20, 2014. That the Town of Yarmouth create a policy for a seniors advisory committee that would work on ways that we can promote Yarmouth as an active, attractive community for anyone who is considering Yarmouth as a home for their semi-retirement and retirement years. I have. I'm new to this town. I've been here approximately two years, and Greg knows this, because he's my lawyer. So, I come here, retired, my wife is well, we have two young children, we bring outside money into the community. When I see stuff like this happening, it really perturbs me, because my best interests are not being looked at by the council. And that's the way I feel. I have no qualms with trying to sell my home at a reduced rate, probably, and leaving. I have no problem with that. But I and my family are the type of people that you want here, because we're here for the long run. We have young children that would grow here. As a matter of fact, before I came here, I planted, or replanted, a tomato plant with my son, the first one he's ever grown. So we've actually developed roots here, just like that tomato plant, already in two years. Do you see where I'm going with this? If you want people like me to come and live here, you've got to want us to be here. And by pulling stunts like this, selling land off to make a little bit of a tax increase, it's not on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. My name is Paul Trask. I'm a resident of thirty-two Elm Street. My immediate family moved into our home on Elm Street in nineteen thirty-two. With the exception of possibly the Rodneys, the Trefries, and Mrs. Betty Cleveland, who was referred to earlier, I believe we are the longest residents of the street, if not the neighbourhood. I don't think there's too many other families that are original to the neighbourhood that are left there. And that's even including the time that I've grown up. As a child, I went to Milton School and fondly remember Mr. Malonsen. The area was mostly single-family homes, with the exception of a few older homes that were converted into apartment buildings. The infrastructure in the area, although not the oldest in town, is barely able to accommodate what is existing. And I have a couple of examples of this. One, you probably don't care about, but it's a problem with Nova Scotia power. There is a power issue at my residence which resulted in having a section of Elm Street between Brunswick Street and Pleasant Street reconstructed and fed from another power source because of a known issue with the King Street substation. Before that was done, they blamed everything in my house, from the meter base to the wiring in my house. I had to get an engineer out of Bridgewater to come down and monitor it, and it was an argument. They finally decided that, yes, it's their fault, and they knew about this problem all along. That's one problem. Some other things to consider before development would be the water table and water course in the area. When I was growing up in the neighbourhood, there was a stream running through between the McClures and the Rodneys that came from across Huntington, through Herbert, went across Elm, down to Brunswick. Most of that is gone now. Others examples of the site, when the sidewalk was first constructed on Pleasant Street above Elm, my family had to install a French drain along the eastern edge of our property to displace the new water runoff created by this construction. During the latest reconstruction of Pleasant Street, as well as the development of former pasture land to the northeast, weeping tile had to be installed along the eastern foundations of our residence and a sump pump installed to prevent the basement from flooding. The basement previously, for over a hundred years, had been reasonably dry. There are a lot of older homes in that neighbourhood that either have rock foundations or very old concrete foundations. Any construction close to or anywhere in the area can lead to thousands and millions of dollars in damage to those basements, not to mention re-diverting the water course, which nobody has studied. Some of the councillors present know about my water problem. When I brought that to the town's attention, I had the town engineer telling me that I couldn't possibly be pumping out that much water. What's the size of your pump? What's the size of your pipes? What's it matter? I have water. Things like this need to be studied and considered before any development agreements are entered into. That being said, I'm not opposed to progress, but that progress should not be allowed to encroach on the lawful enjoyment of the properties that your citizens have worked so hard to Just because a board of directors in a corporation changes, that corporation must still honour any contracts a corporation has made previously. A verbal contract is a legal and binding contract. The hardest part of proving a verbal contract is a he-said, she-said situation, no proof of the contract. As I assume there is proof of an agreement between former council and the residents, i.e. media coverage, meeting minutes, et cetera, would there be a standing for residents in the area to make an application to the Utility Review Board or launch a court action against the present council? In closing, I would like to remind those seated before me that you are elected by the people to serve the people, and you only sit before us at the people's pleasure. Progress is needed not only for the town itself, but for the way in which the town itself conducts its business and the town's reputation. I thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Trask.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Audience, my name's Robert Powell. Just like to point out that points that Mr. Gushu made about what we're here about to consider zoning or rezoning of a strip of land, I just wanted to make sure everyone in the audience was aware that a piece of what was agreed as a park was sold without any kind of input from anyone. So I want to know, is Frost Park for sale?
Not to my knowledge.
Is any other park, so parks, for sale? Does anyone? Because apparently this park got sold.
The Diocese just sold Kent Field, Kent Ballfield.
Yeah.
Which we had a municipal agreement with the Catholic Diocese, but they sold that.
So, this six-foot strip, did it go up for tender? How did it get sold? I'm just curious why we're here, considering something that was, apparently didn't have a transaction tied to it. How did that happen?
Go ahead, CEO.
Thank you. The properties, the three lots, were listed for a few years through the real estate store, and these offers that were accepted by council were the first offers received by council. They were considered and accepted, and the offers included a provision that it required six additional feet, three feet for each of the lots. And so, at the purchaser's expense, the resurvey and subdivision was amended.
Was there exchange of value?
Yes.
What was that?
Is that public record?
No, it's not public record. So, we have a transparency issue here, just want to point out. Big one. So, if you guys wonder why we don't trust you, it's things like this.
Yes, certainly.
It isn't, if I may, just, it isn't a matter of we don't want to tell you, it is that there is privacy protections as well. It's freedom of information and protection of privacy. And I checked with the solicitor to see if I could give you that information. His information to me was no, and that's on the basis of law, not on the basis of wantingly withholding information.
So I just want to quote someone from a few thousand years ago. Lucius Aeneas Seneca. Shame may restrain what law does not permit. Brent, just a few months ago, brought up the point about servant. Just wanted to understand, have everyone understand what a servant is. One that performs duties about the person or home of the master or personal employer. So you're our employee, we're your employer. So we appear to have an inversion of roles here. So we're considering something that was already sold, to consider means to mull over, to think about carefully, especially in regard to taking some action. So, basically, we have a six-foot strip of land that was sold to someone, and now we want to formalize it after the fact. So I would submit that this meeting is a constructive fraud or farce. We're not really considering anything. The decision was already made. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Why are we here tonight about this six-foot strip? You do what you want without our input. Why don't you just not even have a meeting, and you can do it under the law without any And we'll just, don't waste our time. I'm done.
Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead, I can't see you.
Okay.
Go ahead, CEO.
Yeah, no, I just want to clarify that the issue being considered tonight is rezoning that six feet. The six feet was sold, there's no question about that, but it is still zoned open space until such time, and so now, at this moment, it is privately owned open space. And if the application is approved, if the amendment were to go ahead, then the zone line between open space and residential would be on the same line as it sits right now on the map. The property line and the zoning line are six feet offset. So the purpose of the public hearing and the decision council will be faced with tonight is whether to bring those two lines in sync so they follow exactly the same line, or to leave them offset by six feet.
So, so the issue, sorry, Mrs. Powell, he's at the microphone. So the issue we're discussing is the rezoning. Okay?
My name's Nick Jackson. I'm here to lend my support in any way I can to the folks who've come here with a vision, like myself, and invest a lot of time and money in the town that we, you know, we collectively share. And I'm puzzled by this because I'm considering, you know, investing in an older property in town that's going to need some rezoning, possibly, and I'm just sort of, I wonder if the cart was put before the horse in this one because if you look at our parks, which I, I mean, I hear there's lots of parks in Yarmouth, I mean, I guess, you know, there are. However, there's not a lot of parks where you can go and throw a frisbee, fire a rocket, run, play soccer, bat a ball. I don't see a lot of that. And when I see people that come here and spend enormous amounts of time and effort and blood and sweat restoring these houses, which I share in, and I see what they work towards and what it takes out of them to get there, I'm kind of confused as to why they would want to do that when things can be sort of pulled out from under them. And the way I see this is that that park there had, I guess there were some development plans for the park itself to turn it into a park, and I'm wondering why that wasn't done first before it was put up for sale? Because that in itself would have generated more interest in this town. And I know we have a hard time keeping people here that are, you know, that are willing to invest their sweat and their lives into these buildings, which I share in. You know, I've worked on several of these projects, and I know that it takes a tremendous toll on you. And I personally like that park. I like the fact that you can get out there and see for a little ways. And I believe when you build a building, it should look like it was meant to be there. And I know the buildings that this gentleman is talking about building, and they're not bad, they're not awful, but I've heard people refer to them as spreading the slums around. That makes no sense to me, when you have people that are willing to come here and invest in so many of these old buildings that, and again, we're tearing down our heritage buildings, and we're putting these up. I mean, I know they have to grow up, and I know that there's a need for it, but I think that in this particular instance, there was something happened that didn't quite go right here. And I just want to let you know that I deeply feel for these people that are here tonight, expressing to you that, you know, their concerns, and I really believe that if there was a park to be developed, it should have been built first, and then to see what would come along, because that's what, that's what we need. They wouldn't have done that to Central Park in New York City. They don't cut off, they don't cut off little bits of that, although it's the most expensive real estate in the world. They don't sell off little bits of it because they know what would happen. Same thing that is happening in Nevada with the rancher right now. People are coming out to support this farmer who's had his cattle grazing on crown land for a hundred years. And I think that, I guess it's too late now, but I just wanted to express that, my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Councillors, Mr. Gushu, and Ms. Saret. My name is Shirley Sherman. I live at sixty-two Porter Street in Yarmouth. I have been a resident and taxpayer in Yarmouth all my life. I see a definite need for new, fresh housing for the Town of Yarmouth. This is new development, could bring retirees to our area who would attend theatres and other recreational events. They may also be much-needed volunteers, and the list goes on. Retirees have savings and spend in their leisure hours. Regarding the change in zoning for one-twenty-six Brunswick Street in the Town of Yarmouth, the developer is asking the Town of Yarmouth to rezone a six-foot area of land which adjoins Elm Street and Huntington Street to build quality housing. This would be a small portion of the open green space which now exists. This change in zoning would enable the developer to build new homes similar to those in the Elm Street, Pleasant Street area, which are now under construction and some completed. A six-foot piece of land seems a small price to pay for some much-needed additional revenue which this would generate over the years. It would also benefit the residents of the Town of Yarmouth. This rezoning will do little to diminish the open green space in the Town of Yarmouth. There are already four open green spaces and community gardens within walking distance of this proposed development. As stated previously, I would hazard a guess that there are enough open green spaces available to meet the needs of and even exceed the requirements for open green spaces for the citizens of this area. This new development might even give retirement branding lifestyle a much-needed boost. I would recommend that the Town of Yarmouth approves a rezoning of this portion of land known as one-twenty-six Brunswick Street in the Town of Yarmouth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, we have, we're limiting to one person. Anybody else wish to speak?
I would like to know if I can continue.
Because I set the rules at the beginning of the meeting that each person could speak one time for five minutes. You actually spoke for two minutes and fifty seconds, so if you want to come up for another two minutes, then come ahead. With respect.
So, to be brief, I'm very concerned about the direction of our economy here, out on the end of the tip of Nova Scotia. Beautiful place, that's why I came here, brought my family here because of the children environment here. They can't wait to leave now because of this new direction where we're going to have only old people here. This is an asymmetrical society. What's going to happen in thirty years? A ghost town. I want someone to please enlighten me. I want someone to please enlighten me about the vision there. We're just going to continuously bring old people in here and our graveyards are going to fill up.
I can enlighten you on that.
Yes, please.
I'll enlighten you that we are not talking about seniors that are in homes. We are talking about retirees who would absolutely love to live here on the seashore with the water at hand, with the open spaces out in the outskirts. With everything else that we have to offer, with lots, and they have money that they want to spend in small communities and they need young people to look after them which provide jobs for everybody else. So it's a win-win.
So my kids couldn't wait to leave.
Yes.
Why is that?
I don't know.
Have you talked to any of them?
What's that?
We're only talking to seniors here. This is an asymmetrical society you guys are crafting here. It's absurd. It is patently absurd. It's like you're taking one small fragment and calling that your society. This is absurd. And you guys are, we're putting our fiduciary responsibility in your hands where you can't even reason through that a society goes from birth to death. Is this rocket science? I'm just trying to get, that's nice you can talk about people with money. Young people have money.
Yes, they do. We'd love to have them here, too.
Where are they in the equation?
If they want to buy these off.
Where are they?
I'd like to comment to that if I can, Mr. Powell. I have talked to many young people. I work with young people every day. I work with everybody from criminals right to high school students. And I will answer your question, why young people can't wait to go to Yarmouth? $2,500 a week out west. There is no business. I can imagine now, if you can come up with an idea of how we can generate 20, let me finish, please, sir. We need to come up with jobs in this community. If you do the math, that would have to pay in excess of $110,000 a year to a skilled laborer. That's what you're basically looking at. That's why they're going out west. Because my son, he has moved back to the area. He's struggling in the area, there's no question, but he loves the area. But all of his friends are out west, they come back here. But what's interesting, every one of those kids, and many of them have come to my house, are going to come back to Yarmouth to live eventually. They're going to be those old people that you refer to who are, who, I don't know what you, I'm appalled, sir, that you're, I'm old. I'm old, I'm 61.
I got some gray.
But I can't see why you don't want old people to live here because I'm proud to live in my community.
You only want old people to live here. That's the difference. Where's everyone else? You just said, you just, all of you just said that. Where's the family in this equation?
What we are looking at is we need something here to generate, to keep the young people here.
What about building places where young people want to come?
You need industry, you need, you need industry, sir.
Baby boom bubble that you've been hearing in all your conferences.
So, what is your suggestions for keeping young people in the area?
What?
What are your suggestions to keep young people?
We had industry come in and this council and powers that be for years before I came here have been systematically eroding our economic base through concerted, what appears to be a concerted effort to not have industry floors here.
I've lived here all my life and I guarantee you that that is not the case. I don't know where you're getting that information. It's out west right now. And every town in Nova Scotia, Mr. Powell, is in the same position we are. We are one of the more successful towns.
We have fiber around our province, we have high speeds. People like myself can come from all over the world and make way more of what you talked about, yet where's that business model?
Okay. Councilor Mooney, did you want to comment? Because we're getting off topic. Okay, we're talking about the rezoning, so did you? Way off, go ahead.
Well. Well, I. I have to disagree with Mr. Powell, too. I talked to a gentleman the other day, got a job with SunCorps getting paid $7,800 every two weeks. We need industry in this end of the province that can create that kind of economic generator. We had the tin mine. I talked to a gentleman the other day that made more money in 1991 at the cotton mill than he does today. He's making about $1,580 an hour today, he's making minimum wage. Those jobs are going overseas after the free trade. Those jobs with the tin, when the tin mine was here, that fell through the floor. What we have to do, and we're trying to do it, we're trying to, we have on tap, if you look tonight, are we doing the budget tonight? Tonight's budget, we have our first true town of Yarmouth economic person's going to be in place. I know we had one here a year or two ago, but that was taken over by the province. We have one dedicated to the town of Yarmouth and one of his jobs is going to be tasked bringing in industry in our town. There's all kinds of ways to generate economic activity and industry. We're a dying population, like we said, they're going out west. I know in my family, I have three nieces, one in Newfoundland that's making good money going to university full-time and working part-time, and I had two nieces go out west to teach. I feel the pain. I'd like to have my nieces in my family close to me, but guess what? They're moving out west. And it's not because they wanted to go out west, it's because they couldn't get a job here, not only in Yarmouth, but in Nova Scotia teaching. So, in my family, I look at mine, and you look at your worship family, she had six in her family, six in mine. I don't have any children, my brother has three, which is an economic generator in itself, and the other ones don't have, you know, have one or two. It's the size of the families these days, too. Why are all the kids going out west? When you have one child that's going out west and you have one child, that's everybody. You know, not like the old days when you had five or six people in the family, you had one that, one that, the way you had five here, it's a little different. But I would love to have this debate. And I know when this new regional economic network gets going, along with the other nine municipal units, is it nine in this end of the province?
No.
Going to be six, six units in this province, there's going to be an opportunity for you, Mr. Powell, and Doris, and anybody else that wants to come out and discuss about how you want to bring people or young people into this end of the province. You're going to have an opportunity sooner than you think. And we want every idea that you have, good, bad, or indifferent. We need it. We need you guys, we need you guys in the public and you guys out there in TV land to come and fill the room when that person gets in place or that economic council gets in place to help us. We need help, man. We're one of the lucky towns in this province. When you look at places like Hansport, Canso, Spring Hill. If you're going to see, our economic indicators are good for a town our size with flat residential rates and commercial rates. I want to see commercial rates come down. I don't want to see an increase in taxes. And we didn't do that this year. So you'll see that in the budget, but I'd love to have this debate on what we can do to bring young people back into this end of the province. And I know, I don't think it'll be a debate, I think everybody is going to be on the same page and everybody wants the same thing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? The rezoning alone? For a second time, would anybody like to speak to the issue? Third time? Anybody like to speak to the issue? Okay. Oh, sorry. Councilor Dennis, sorry, I didn't see your light. Go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody who came out to speak tonight, and I have a lot of respect for the people who believe in something. And I'm very grateful that you came out. Thank you.
The next order of business. An application to enter into a development agreement in order to establish a personal service shop, convenience store, and a restaurant up to a maximum combined area of 278.7 square meters, 3,000 square feet, in gross commercial floor area as well as residential dwelling units at 54 Haley Road as outlined in the proposed development agreement of the planner's report. And the same holds true, the same rules will hold, that we'll have per speaker, one time, five minutes, and just state your name and your address. Would some, anyone like to speak to this issue? Oh, and the C A O, you're going to, yeah, go ahead. One second.
Yeah, so this is a, this is enabled, this is a proposed development agreement for a specific address. And so this was enabled by a recent amendment to our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. The provisions in the development agreement would supersede or would come ahead of our land use bylaw, any provisions in our land use bylaw. However, anything not specifically identified within the development agreement does default back to the land use bylaw. So the development agreement that is being proposed here provides four different scenarios for the developer if it was approved by council. That includes the combination of commercial development as well as residential development. The agreement is fairly lengthy. I trust everyone's read it. The developer is present if he wanted to address council as well, but if there are any specific questions, we can try and answer them.
Good. Thank you. Welcome.
Vivian Kennedy, 176 Argyle Street. I'm an old lady.
No, you're not.
I'm being sarcastic. I've lived at 176 since 1965. And before that, I've always lived on Argyle Street, the upper end. We now have a terrible water problem. Our basement is always wet, we're running a sump pump all the time, you can't go on our backyard. I realize that's getting away from the point. The point is, I am asking you to reject that rezoning. It is a swamp. There is a, I'm not quite sure what you call that housing development across the street. I'm not really quite sure. There are 11 houses, 44 units, no sidewalks, no street lights, and obviously no place for their water to run because it's going in open pipes in the ditch. And that water is draining down on us. So, across the street on Forest, Forest and Haley, the said property, that is a swamp. And if you let anybody build in there without, without the proper sewage in place, you're going to have a horrific water problem. Because the houses across the street were built in a swamp, and this is a swamp. And you're going to have the drainage down on the Catholic cemetery. That's one thought. And all of the houses in that area. Right now, my house on Argyle Street, the basement is never dry. And please reject that rezoning. I'm not against, I certainly wouldn't be against a convenience store or anything else there, as long as everything is covered in a new sewage program. We definitely need not to have the water running in everybody's basement. Now, I've been there, as I say, since 1965, and I'm going to be there a hell of a lot longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Did you want to, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, hi Leah. Thank you, Viv. I got to ask Jeff, or the C A O, a question in this year's budget. I don't want to, I'm letting all the good stuff out of the budget already before you get a chance to C A O. But we are doing an extensive, what is it called, a smoke test on Argyle Street, which is the ultimate test you can get for, I believe, water and storm water? And I think we're addressing another problem or two in that neck of the woods. If the C A O could elaborate, please?
Yeah, it's the, thank you, worship, the study that's being done is called an infiltration study, not a smoke study, but. They call it smoke test? Okay, okay, we'll go with that. So what it is, is it's to look at the sanitary sewer system along the, along Argyle Street and see where storm water is infiltrating the system. Clearly, there is storm water entering the sanitary system, and that's not a desirable situation. We do have separate storm sewer in that area. So if the storm water were in the storm sewer, we would have much fewer problems with the sanitary system backing up. The other, the other part, if I can, if I can leave that and go to the development agreement, there are a couple of provisions within the proposed development agreement that try to address the issue of storm water runoff. One of them is the requirement that the developer submit a lot grading plan or a surface drainage plan to the town engineer for approval. And the developer shall submit to the town, submit the town engineer's approval to the development officer prior to the issuance of a development permit. So that requires that there be a management plan in place approved by the engineer for the storm water. The second thing that was, that was talked about during the public participation process was the idea of leaving a buffer zone around the, around the property, a natural vegetation area. And there is a 20-foot natural vegetation area required on the downhill side of that property to allow nature to exist and to do its job in terms of managing storm water there as well. So there are a couple of provisions that specifically address the concern, and they were raised before in the, at the planning committee level when this was discussed.
No, no, it's just if you want to come, do you mind if she just comes up to this so we can hear her? But you don't have to move if you don't want, you can share it with Vivian. Yeah.
Would that be all in place before you have any further building there?
Yes. I'll come back.
Good. Thank you for that, because I didn't, I didn't know that either. Welcome.
Okay. My name is Leah Hazelton. Good evening, all. I've lived in that house since I was born. I'm 71 years old, so I've been there since 1943. I'm used to my old house and my space.
Where are you, Leah?
At 187 Forest.
187.
My land joins this 54.
Oh, I got you, okay. Thank you.
So as far as I'm concerned, I like it the way it is. I don't really think that we need another restaurant or, and there's enough housing up at the other side of the corner that I don't really feel we need more there. I would like for Mr. Miller to point out what he has in mind after, so we know what's, like, all we know is that they want to rezone it. Well, I guess Vivian covered a lot of it. I'm wondered about a buffer zone, like if they do put something in there, I really don't want, yes, but he was talking about Argyle Street. I'm talking about.
Yep.
I'm talking about Forest.
Let him clarify that.
So, so the property.
My property joins that corner.
Yes, on the downhill side.
On the Forest Street side.
So there would be a 20-foot wide natural buffer remaining. So the developer would not be permitted to go in there except for minor pruning. He wouldn't be able to upset the soils or anything of that nature. So 20 feet would remain between your property, I guess on his property before he'd be able to develop.
Be able to come.
Yard.
Okay. Now, years ago, when I first started working, I had called to see how much they wanted for that piece of land, and it was $1,000. I don't think he got it for that. The next time we called, they wanted 30, and the last time somebody asked about it, it was 99. So there was no way, I'm enjoying the space while it's there. And really, the most important thing, how many of you actually know that we're in the town limits and we do not have town sewer? I know you do, and I know he does. Oh, okay. We don't have town sewer. I just had to have my septic tank pumped out a couple of months ago. Like, we're the last houses, we're the last houses in the town of Yarmouth that does not have town sewer. We do, we do have the water, at least I do. My neighbor doesn't, she didn't bother, she had a good well. So, anyway, so that was really, there's four houses, there's mine and Morris's next door. The next property to hers is the one that the church bought, and they couldn't sell it because they had to have 80,000 square feet, I think it is, if you don't have, if you don't have town sewer. If you have to have a septic system, you have to have, that's what, I think that was the amount, 80,000 square feet. And they didn't want to give that, we're taking a big chunk of their property that they want it for the cemetery, so that's why the house was torn down. Okay?
Do you want, do you have a question now?
Comment, and I've had this discussion with Leah probably.
Yeah, for about three years.
I was going to say longer than that, Leah, and I think it originally came up, I thought when they were building the new school, that we had a solution for your problem, but I think it was with Phil Cox and the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal that it didn't come to fruition. I know they did, they went farther down with what they were going to do, and I thought they were going to go actually. they were going to go actually kind of cap you, and that's what I really wanted, because I know you...like you said, you've been on that corner for your whole life, and I thought we could take care of that. And the scope of the project changed, and they just moved it down a little bit, but...
Well, it's not only...
You know, I know there's...I know people, it's hard to believe that there is still a few residents in the town of Yarmouth that...
And that's mine, yeah.
And that's one of them, and I'd like to see that before we're done remedied.
Before you start doing something new, finish up the old.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah. We have a...there was a lot of times, quite a few years ago, when Mr. Crosby was mayor, they dug all the ditches and filled them with rocks about this big, and they made drainage. And on our side of the road, they put in, like, I don't know, things for the water to drain into so it would go across the street. Because before that, everything flooded on our side of the road. So they...every...so far, you'll see like a pipe-type of thing. And when the water gets to that, it goes, and it's drained over on the other side. So we thought that was...when we saw them digging, oh, boy, they're going to put in the sewer. No, it's not booked for this time. So that was there. The church went there. They went that way with their sewer system. The school went down the road. The jail, well, that's too far, but at least it was coming down my way. The one on the corner...the houses, all the houses on the corner, they put in new sewer, but they didn't come across the street. So we're still...we still do not have sewer. Anyway. And with my house, I just have an old rock cellar. I don't have a basement. It's a cellar, and it's a rock one. So my cellar leaks anyway. So if that field was developed, if that corner, I don't know, my sump pump would be running overtime. Like, it would be, you know, it would be going...I think that's all...I was just...I'm just concerned that it's going to...well, my property...
How old's the house that you're in now, Leah?
187.
I said, how old?
Oh, it was built in 1922.
1922?
Yeah. It was my grandparents', then it was my mother's', and then it was mine and Leonard's'. Yeah. But I've lived there all my life. Someone asked me if I have ever left Yarmouth. I said, "God, I never even got out of my house."[726.12][726.12](Laughter) So that's...anyway, thank you for listening. I think that's all I had, but I would like to hear what Mr. Miller has to say, what he's thinking about the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazelton. Would someone like to speak...someone else like to speak to this? Do you...did you want to come up and...you don't have to, you're not bound to, but she did...she is wondering.
I've owned the property on the corner of Forest Street and Haley Road for over 30 years.
Did you pay more than $1,000 for it? No.[767.51][767.51](Laughter)
And I paid a lot more than $1,000 for it. Anyway, it's a 2.7-acre property. It's well situated for traffic-wise. It's a corner lot on Forest Street and Haley Road. There's a multi-residential property across the street, which the lady mentioned. There's an institutional property on the other corner of the church. The high school is next to the church. There's a vacant lot to the south side of the property, and then an apartment building of, I think, four units. There's a stone wall as you go down between this lady's house and my property, and of course, there will be 20 feet of undisturbed vegetation, which I had asked Arthur if I could replace the alders with nice shrubbery, and he had said yes, but it can stay the way it is if that...if those are the requirements. There's a sanitary sewer at the corner of the property. There's a fire hydrant on the property, and there's town water and town sewer in the street in front of the property. I believe, having other property on the Haley Road, that the storm sewer is connected to the sanitary sewer. And that may not be in keeping with the general rules, but because there is no storm sewer, people on the Haley Road are discharging water into the sanitary sewer. The engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we are. And the drainage goes down the Haley Road to Stars Road. Anyway, I had the...I would like to sell the property. I was approached by a gentleman from Clare who has a very successful pizza parlor across from the high school. There was what appeared to be an obvious need for additional food service at the high school because of the size of the lunchroom and the time allotted to feed all students. He approached me, and he actually applied for the rezoning in my company's name. He's since acquired another property at the...I'm trying to think of the name of the base by Digby, Cornwallis.
Cornwallis.
At Cornwallis, and he's starting a new business at Cornwallis, okay? I've reimbursed him for his costs to date and taken over the project because I think it's a good one. I think it's a good location for this, and I think that the way it's proposed, the neighbors are protected. But I'm looking for someone to follow through with it.
To what?
To follow through with the development.
Okay, I hear you. Good.
That's all.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Nope, we're good. She just wanted to...yeah. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Anyone else? Third and final, anyone else who wish to speak to this? Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Number three. We have an application to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to enable the creation of a health and wellness designation and subsequent health campus zone for the Yarmouth Regional Hospital Center to be applied to the following properties outlined below: 5860 Vancouver Street, 62 Vancouver, 64 Vancouver, Grove Road. There's no civic assigned there. CAO?
Thank you, worship. We do have a presentation on this application. This is a town-sponsored application. And with us from WSP, the company that we've hired to assist with this one, we have Greg Zwicker and Blaze Morrison. So I'll help them get the computer back up and running, and they'll run through a presentation on exactly what this application is about.
Hello again.
Now, this is on...this is on the gentleman, which is...which is good, but he'll adjust it so that the people can...just for the cameras and the internet.
Perfect.
Not that we don't want to look at you.
Should we angle a bit or something?[1110.13][1110.13](Laughter) There you go.
Yeah. Good.
So, Madam Mayor and members of council, good to see some of you again. So we're here today on behalf of the town to help with the proposed amendments, as Mr. Gucci just outlined, for the former title view manor lands and surrounding Yarmouth Hospital lands to redesignate those lands to health and wellness, to enable a new zone that we're going to be calling the health campus zone, to enable some new uses. So, as many people in the room I know, we're dealing with the lands of the Yarmouth Hospital, which is actually four parcels, four lots, two of which in the center do not have any lot frontage, which, as we go through this, you'll see that's one of the issues with this particular process. So the current regulations on these lands are...the lands are designated residential, actually. There is no institutional-type designation within your municipal planning strategy. So the residential designation does have a policy that basically recognizes the existing uses on that land. Within that, it creates a zone, which is the I-1 zone. So the lands are currently zoned institutional, which is I-1. And within that zone, it lists a variety of uses, including what is mostly there...what is there now, which would be hospitals, but also governmental institutional facilities. Basically, a public facility, not a private-type facility. Then we delve a little bit deeper into the land use bylaw. There are also specific requirements for lot areas, one of which is lot frontage. All lots shall have frontage on a public street. So the question...when this initial issue got brought up, brought to us by the city or the town of Yarmouth, was that one particular applicant wanted to come and change one of the uses at the former title view manor into a private use. But if we change the use to a private use, all of a sudden, that particular use wouldn't have frontage on the road, therefore would not comply, therefore we'd have to change the planning strategy and the land use bylaw to enable essentially the same use. The only thing that was different was basically the operation of that particular use. So in order to consider that particular use, particular proposed use, which is the private operation, we do have to amend it. But in this process as well, we try to look at it in a little bit of a larger picture rather than looking at the one particular former title view lands. We try to expand that to allow for...basically recognize the existing uses that are there today, but also expand on that to try to anticipate and maybe accommodate for future health and wellness-type uses, which can encourage a new business or new...different opportunities on those lands. So why do we consider amending the NPS? Again, title view manners, being proposed a change from public to a private use. The current planning designation and zone don't recognize that. There's currently no frontage, and the private care facilities are not supported in the zone. So, yeah. So the amendment process, when...and this is consistent across the province, when one wants to consider amending the municipal planning strategy, there are generally a couple of criteria that have to apply. At least one of three general criteria have to apply. The first would be, has there been a change in circumstance since the plan was adopted that would warrant changing the planning strategy? The second one, is there a significantly different situation than the plan has anticipated? And the third is, was there an error made in the plan, and therefore we have to go and correct that error? So we're going to go, for the most part, we think that we can apply the first criteria option, which is the change in circumstance, and that being the shift from public ownership to private ownership. Loosely, we've also talked a little bit about the errors made in the sense that there actually was no institutional designation. The current institutional zone is within a residential designation, so in one way or another, we're also trying to correct that error in the planning strategy. So when we incorporate that policy criteria, the land use rationale is that the proposed use is not materially different than the existing use. The general uses in the zone that are there today and that which will be proposed, as you'll see, are essentially the same use. Furthermore, the existing lots, they're there today, they don't have frontage. We're continuing to support the existing lot fabric. No new infrastructure would necessarily be required to support this amendment. And we, as I mentioned earlier, we provide an opportunity to expand and add complementary uses to the new zone. And again, we're also trying to address the non-frontage issue on a site-specific basis. Don't want to get into too much, but the current plans and bylaws are kind of littered with very restrictive covenants on frontage in lot areas, so...
That's an understatement.
This is kind of one way that we're trying to address it. So this is the actual proposed amendment that we would apply to the four properties that were...that are in question right now. So this text, if approved tonight, that we're considering tonight, this would be the actual text that would be implemented into the municipal planning strategy. So in order to simplify things as well, when we review the current Yarmouth Municipal Planning Strategy, the municipal planning strategy often has listed the exact uses that are allowed in the zone, but usually we like to separate those documents. The planning strategy gives a general overview and the intent of what that area should be, and then the land use bylaw will list the particular uses. So the first step in the municipal planning...or the new designation is we are giving council and the town the power to redesignate these lands as health and wellness to reflect current healthcare uses, so what's there today, and to anticipate future healthcare and assisted living opportunities. So very general, but it also captures what's there today and trying to anticipate, exactly as it says, there are future opportunities that are similar in nature to what is there today. Following that, the second step of the policy is take that designation, give the power to council to establish the zone underneath that, which would be the health campus zone. Within that zone, the third step, it then gives the power of council and the town to establish the specific criteria in terms of lot areas, uses, et cetera. And also, we implemented a very general policy that addresses the frontage issue as well. Again, the municipal planning strategy is littered with frontage, must have frontage, must have frontage. So this one says, notwithstanding anything in this bylaw, this particular zone and those particular properties, the health campus uses are exempt from frontage requirements so long as lot area requirements, setbacks, and all the other existing zoning requirements that are there today remain the same. So when we go into land use bylaw, I don't have the whole thing on the presentation, the proposed zone, but essentially, the proposed zone is fundamentally exactly the same as the existing I-2 zone that is there today, plus or minus a few changes. There are a couple new uses, but the general new use is the allowance of private uses. Sorry, I may not have mentioned on the last slide, but...oh, yeah, sorry, it doesn't mention anything about public or private in that...in the policy. So we are allowed public or private uses. So whereas the old I-2...
Please. No, I was just going to...do you...
I'll...I'll...
Okay, just wave your hand when you're ready for the question in case he gets ahead of us. Go ahead, Blaze, sorry.
Yep, no worries.
Yeah.
So yes, the uses that we're proposing are the same uses that are essentially there today. So hospitals, group homes, governmental institutional facilities, governmental offices, nursing homes, all those uses that are still in the same...that are in the I-1 zone today are proposed in the same health campus zone. But the change is that we're allowing public or private uses. So we've allowed for colleges, universities, schools, and other educational facilities, so they could be training facilities, again, to offer new opportunities in the area. So the existing nursing homes or group homes can be privately operated or publicly operated. Specific thing we added in the land use bylaw, it usually has minimum lot areas, lot frontages, front yards, rear yard, side yard, setbacks, to make sure that any uses in there are in conformance with the surrounding areas. So we've left all those exactly the same, to make sure that any...if any of these new uses do get proposed in the area, they're the same. The only one we have exempted is the lot frontage requirement. And again, that's more or less just to respect the existing fabric on the lots. We're also allowing in the new zone multiple main buildings on a lot, so you can have two main buildings on a lot, but nonetheless, they still have to respect those same yard setbacks, area requirements. And we're also, because the way the buildings are existing on the lots today, whereas they're attached, so subdivision does happen, we're also allowing a line...a zero-foot setback between a common wall boundary. So that'd be similar to like a strip mall scenario when you have...or a semi-detached house where it's technically two lots, but they share the same line in the middle. So, yeah, that's that. So that's basically it. So it's a large process, you know, the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw at the same time. But generally, we're not stretching anything too far in this particular case. We feel like it makes sense from a municipal planning strategy point of view, from a land use bylaw point of view, to accommodate uses that are generally the same, but also trying to expand a little bit on that to create new uses, new opportunities in the area. And, you know, our review of the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw is this is, you know, one step and possibly a bigger process to, you know, just kind of help things along and help the planning process, make it a little bit more clear, less complex.
Cumbersome, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Blaze. Councilor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Well, welcome to Yarmouth. You're about three years overdue.[1744.75][1744.75](Laughter) We have been...I've been...my council's been waiting also, but you purchased the building. Are you the owners or are you representing the owners?
No, we represent the town, actually. So we were brought on about before Christmas, actually.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay. So I missed it because I had to leave there, so that's why. Okay, yeah, you go ahead then. I thought that they were the owners.[1769.83][1769.83](Laughter) I was really happy to...happy to listen to them.
So happy to have you here.
Yeah, really, so happy to have you here because it's been three years and close to three years, and anyway, go ahead, Jeff.
So Greg Zwicker and Blaze Morrison are with WSP. We engaged WSP to handle this application, which is a town-sponsored application. The reason we hired them on this one is that initially, our own planner at the time was in a conflict of interest on the file, so... time was in a conflict of interest on the file, so these, these gentlemen were hired, their firm was hired, and they've worked with our planning committee, and we've gotten to this point. So, they, they, they've been hired by the town to kind of replace our, our own planner in terms of handling this.
Good. Councilor.
I got a question probably for the C A O, and nice presentation, thank you very much, but now that the old Title View building is owned privately, what's the, I know we do grants, or we do grants and lieu, but what's the story on the taxation issue with the old Title View?
Okay, so, so when the property was, was sold from, from a not-for-profit, which, which Title View Manor has an exemption, as I believe you're aware, in the town of Yarmouth, from paying taxes. When title changed to, to Gem Healthcare, it became taxable, and, and so they do pay property taxes like every other business in town. The issue that we have with it is that they actually can't do anything in the building because of the zoning, the zoned institutional, and you can't operate any private business of any kind in the institutional zone. So, that gave rise to the question, well, we have landlocked parcels that have existed there forever, the town fought hard to keep that building standing, in hopes that somebody would come along and buy it, and they did. And, and so now, since they cannot develop it, we looked at what would be a reasonable way to, to address their need, but also address the fact that we have cluster of, of health-related activity up there, including parts of Dow House University, our own, our own hospital, regional hospital, and Title View Harborside. So, could we craft a, a new section in our, in our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw that would anticipate compatible uses and, and save them the aggravation of a six-month or longer wait in the future before they're able to move forward? Now, the land, the only property that's changed hands here is, is the property that Gem Healthcare has purchased, the former Title View Manor. The Hospital Foundation owns one large part of the property, the Province of Nova Scotia owns the other half where the hospital is, and then the, the Harborside is, is the other landlocked parcel.
Do you finish what yours got to say?
And, and the one that the Hospital Foundation owns, is there any buildings on that piece of property?
Go ahead.
I don't believe there are any buildings on that actual parcel. I believe that, that actually incorporates perhaps the parking lot that is, that is between, between the, then the ball field, the parking lot, between the Grove Road and the former Title View, I believe is part of that property, and it comes around the back of the, back of Title View, meets, meets the province's land in the back.
Good, thank you.
Good, Councilor McIsaac.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, you're right, Jeff, we did work hard to sell that property, and it was a touch-and-go, and we had interested people, but these were the most interested people. And just a note, that if the property wouldn't have sold, that property would have come down at the taxpayer's expense at 1.5 million dollars. Now, this, this is going to be developed when this goes through, and that's going to be great, because if it goes through, that's what, that's what they need for it to go through. And it's going to create a well-needed industry in the town of Yarmouth for, for people, for working professionals, and it's going to be a lot of spinoffs, going to be a lot of things happening, a lot of good things happening. You're looking at probably, probably fifty to sixty jobs or more, plus all the supply materials management. It's a good thing, it's a good thing, but the real good thing is for them to want to come to Yarmouth to do this. These, these, this organization is known for their, what they do, and this is what they do. They have these type of places that they develop, and it's in these places, and they're key places for these, for this organization. So, we're, we're very lucky that they chose Yarmouth to come, and we're also very lucky that they bought this, this nice building, and they're going to redevelop it, and we're also lucky that we saved 1.5 million dollars to the taxpayer, so that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
And we're getting taxes on top of it. Okay. So, thank you, gentlemen. Is there someone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Mrs. Powell? Yep, she's, Jeff's going to give them a microphone, Mrs. Powell, so they can answer you and you can hear.
First, I want to just read, and then, yeah. First, I'd like to read a letter I was asked to read. This is from Roseanne Webster.
Yes, we have that.
She is Arthur McDonald's wife, and she has a business on Vancouver Street. She would have been here tonight to read this herself, but she was injured in a bottle accident, and it exploded in her face, and I'm hoping she's doing better. And I have been praying for her as well. April fourteenth, twenty fourteen, dear council, regarding council meeting April seventeenth, twenty fourteen, I wish to share my opinions regarding the proposed amendments pertaining to the health and wellness designation. The amendment includes a proposal to enable developments to occur without frontage. If council approves such an amendment, I feel that it is, that it is only just and fair to enable all existing landlocked properties the same rights and privileges. These properties have the ability to add to the town's tax base and should be enabled to be developed. It is unfair to provide such an exemption only within this designation. I also don't agree with leaving the required amount of parking up to the subjective analysis of the development officer. Developments historically have been required to satisfy parking standards. Of this exemption is unfair to those that developed in compliance with these minimum standards at considerable expense. This would create an unfair advantage to competing uses in other areas throughout the town. Please consider my concerns. Sincerely, Roseanne Webster, L P N, Vancouver Place Seniors Residence. So, that was for her.
Thank you for that.
Now, in regards to the Milton School Committee, in regards to Title View Nursing Home becoming private, we have no collective issues. We're, we're happy, we're fine with that, and with them changing their zoning, so they can make that building have a use. In regards to rezoning all of the beautiful oceanfront land surrounding the Yarmouth Hospital, we have a lot of questions. I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Milton School Committee to voice our current collective mistrust in the town's potential re-designation slash rezoning of all the prime oceanfront land around our hospital. As we wrote in our registered letter, the one we didn't get a response to, quote, "We require much more detailed information than what has been posted about the specific potential developments and potential, and the potential developer, WSP. We want to know exactly what would be constructed in the vicinity of our hospital, and more importantly, its implications to the surrounding residents and businesses before we can render any educated opinion on the matter. We feel that what is being proposed is highly abstract and a complex issue to the people of Milton, the people of Yarmouth, as well as the entire South Shore who use the hospital facilities. And therefore, we require and deserve 100% transparency and accountability on all aspects of this potential rezoning and development project. Now, we didn't know this was happening tonight, we're very happy to see this. However, it's not enough. We would like to see that the hospital land rezoning issue should have its own separate in-depth public presentation made by the town as well as the potential developer before any votes or motions are carried, so we can digest the facts and can render an educated opinion on this matter." Again, this was nice, but it still doesn't tell me what they're putting there. We require a separate dedicated public rezoning hearing on a future date, which is well advertised to the, all the stakeholders who live not only in Yarmouth, but the entire South Shore, so everyone has the opportunity to put in their input. These are the people that the hospital serves, and so these are the people who should have a say in what happens to that land. Respectfully submitted, Doris Powell, on behalf of the Milton School Committee. Again, I appreciate this presentation this evening, we didn't know that there was going to be this presentation. Our concern, or the concerns that brought us to write this letter, and that was the group, was why, and again, we don't have any problem with that nursing home, that's great, we'd like it to be used, but all the other oceanfront land, which I think everyone, it's obvious to most people that that's prime oceanfront. If anyone's ever been a patient in that hospital, which I have been, and you get lucky enough to get the window looking towards the ocean, that is the most unbelievable view in Yarmouth. So, naturally, we are going to be protective of what goes there, as residents of the South Shore who use the hospital. So, we don't understand why you have to zone all of it now, why wouldn't you just zone it as you had a purchaser? And at the time, you have a purchaser, tell the people of Yarmouth, we have this purchaser, they'd like to put A B C there, is that okay? And if we say yes, then go ahead and rezone it. But to rezone it all now, especially with what this welling, wellness designation entails, if you look at the list, it's a no zoning zoning, it's pretty much the kitchen sink can go there. I think the only thing that wasn't on there was racetracks and, you know, tanning salons. There was a lot of things that can go in there, and that's very disturbing to us. Again, we're not against development, I think that is wonderful land, and it could be developed, we're not against developing it, but we, especially with our experiences with things that have happened, we're now skeptical, and we don't feel comfortable with all that land being rezoned all at once, without having really knowing and having something in writing from WSP or whoever wants to build there. We want to know what specifically is going to go there. Is it going to be nursing homes, is it going to be an aquatic center, is it going to be yoga center, is, I mean, there's a lot of things that fit, fill under, you know, that can fit under wellness. So, that's, that's kind of our concern.
He, he can respond to that if you want to just hold on, or you can finish if you want.
Well, no, I'm finished, what I, what we had pre-written, but the other concern we had is, in doing research with WSP, we saw that there, they used to be Genovar, and there was quite a large scandal involved with Genovar, and that's why they changed their name to WSP. And so, we are concerned, I don't know necessarily, I'd like to hear from.
I can fill you in on that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from you, because we're a little concerned about that.
WSP is not the builder, we're not buying the land, we're not building anything. We have been, we are urban planners, we've been hired by the town to act as the planner in this case. We have no interest in the land, we're not building on the land, we have no financial investment in the land. We're being paid for hours of our service to show up and present the application. That's all we're doing. WSP did use, we were Genovar, a Canadian company, Genovar bought WSP, an international company, and yes, Genovar in Quebec has some issues, as with all the other companies in Quebec. That's not why the name changed. The name changed because we were a Canadian company, we're now an international company operating in thirty-six countries. Thirty-five of those were operating as WSP, one of them was operating as Genovar, so rather than rebrand the rest of the world, we changed Canada over to WSP. So, it wasn't a name change to avoid a scandal or to get away from a scandal. And anyway, as far as the issue on, at the table, it's irrelevant. We're here as planning professionals, offering a planning document to the committee and the town, we are not the builders. There's another purchaser that the town is talking to, so we're not on that side of it at all.
Right.
As far as rezoning all the land goes, those lands are already zoned to allow institutional uses. The list of uses that are permitted in the zone are the exact same as what is there today. The one change is that a private care facility is now permitted. So, Title View is allowed to operate there as a government-run facility, you cannot, you cannot open up that exact same building as a private care facility and offer the exact same services as a private care under your existing zone. It only allowed government-run institutions. So, to operate that exact same building, the exact same service, and the exact same setup as a private care facility is not permitted. So, the new zone brings in all uses from the old zone, with the exception that now private care facilities are allowed in. So, we're not rezoning everything, opening up for developments, the same as what was there, with the addition of the private care facility.
Okay, but, but in rezoning it, it now appears to be that it would be for sale, because if someone wanted to come in and put in, let's say, a private nursing home, and, and they paid the town what.
I don't think anything is for sale, but the town can respond to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, why would you rezone it unless it's for sale, or it's going to be sold?
Yeah, go ahead, C A O.
A sale of, of any of that property actually wasn't, wasn't contemplated. When, when I began the discussions with, with Blaze and Greg about, about how to approach this, they reviewed our MPS and L U Bay, L U B, and gave, gave us options. This was one of the options. Now, this involves three other property owners, the, the Hospital Foundation, the Province of Nova Scotia, and we've communicated with the, the local management, and, and Harborside. And we have received no concerns from them about it. Now, we don't think any of them are looking to sell their property. What this does is it actually permits them, if they wish, if the Hospital Foundation and their wisdom in the future felt that they want to develop their property, this creates, I mean, this, this establishes a list of uses, and those uses don't necessarily need to be operated by the government or not-for-profit, they could be operated for, they could be operated by a for-profit, as is the case with, with Gem Healthcare. So, it is, it is anticipating that, that the, the government-operated or not-for-profit-operated healthcare system sometimes is complementary to, to private, and we can facilitate that by doing this change now. Now, they could have said to us, you know what, the Hospital Foundation, as an example, they could have said, we have no interest in this, we don't want any change, leave us out of this, and we would have gone back, and, and of course, it's their property, right? We have no, no interest in their property. So, if they'd have said that, we would have changed the, changed the direction on this. The same goes for the hospital or even Harborside. But we received no feedback from any of those parties with any concerns that this was in any way inconsistent with their plans or threatened their property rights in any way. So, we felt comfortable to, to continue along this vein and bring it to this point. But there is no purchase-sale hinging on this, as there sometimes is in rezonings, you might have.
Right, I would, and I would say ninety percent of the time that something is rezoned, it's because someone wants to purchase it.
So, in this case, in this case, what happened, and it's, it's no different than, than Mr. Daley's situation we talked about earlier, there was a sale of property, the, the Title View to Gem Healthcare before a rezoning took place. And it's a little more complicated in this case, because we have a landlocked parcel, which, as, as Blaze mentioned, our, our land use bylaw wraps it up pretty tight, that you can't develop these landlocked parcels. Now, we could have done, we could have done a crazy workaround to avoid any amendment to the land use bylaw to allow this to happen, and that would have involved the transfer of a strip of land twenty feet wide to reach out to, to Vancouver Street, widen it out to a hundred feet wide at the street, and it would have met all of our land use bylaw requirements, but it would have required land transfers of this crazy strip, it would have required surveying costs and so on. But the average person, nobody in this room and nobody in the community, would look at that and see anything different. It would be a paper exercise in order to, to transfer slivers of land to enable them to do what they want to do. Again, we thought that was probably not, not the best approach, that let's, let's fix the problem in this application, and so thanks to these guys, they, they, you know, they are the professional planners, and they came up with the policies and bylaw amendments that we think protect the public interest, and at the same time, allow the development of a, of a cluster of health-related activities that might generate economic value and prosperity within the community.
Now, I have another question. Have you factored in traffic patterns, and if you were to put, you know, let's say, a bunch of buildings out there, as far as traffic going in and out of that hospital area, because it's, right now, especially in the morning, and when people get off shift, it's pretty crazy there? Have you factored that in?
All we're, all we're doing is adding the use to the zone, and if the owner is going to come in for building permits, or ask for construction permits, or change of any type of permits, those will have to go through the normal permitting process. We're not reviewing an application, we're not assessing an application. We're here to, we understand the town is interested in allowing a private care facility in there, as the planners, it's our job to show you or tell you how to do that. It's up to the town if you are ready and willing to do that. All we're doing is showing you the tools and the technique to allow that use in there. So, we're not giving any permits, we're not reviewing any drawings, this is just a, a planning exercise. This is just a planning exercise to allow a private care facility in that property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Would anyone else like to speak to this?
He said to leave this with you, so.
Yes, I think we all have a copy of that, but we'll.
Oh, you got one?
Roseanne's letter.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We have that.
Did you want it?
Yes. Yes, sir?
Because I have it on computer.
You can come to the microphone, yes?
I have a question about Harborside Lodge. Can you say the land in Harborside Lodge too? The land in Harborside Lodge?
Is, are you asking if it's the land beside Harborside?
Yeah, the land in Harborside Lodge.
Is it that, it's sort of attached? Yeah, it's next to it.
How about the, it's not even matter.
This is Harborside.
Okay.
And this property is part of it.
Okay, thank you.
It's in the back, right?
It's in the back, nothing, or?
It's in the back, in the row over there.
Row over is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This property is part of it.
Yeah.
This is Harborside.
Yeah?
How about it's in the hospital, can you differ in the hospital too? Same price?
Hospital is here.
Okay.
And this is, it's natural land, it's owned by, yeah, it's not hospital.
Are you going to, are you going to make wellness agreement, or?
No.
Just planning?
Just, just moving our, what you can have.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this? We've got two. Mr. Powell, you can come up after Mrs. Weir.
I know, you don't think me crazy on this one. But whoever, I'm so glad to think the Title View may be, or the old Title View will be used again.
Yes.
Just don't forget with any development, we have a helicopter pad there.
Yes.
And there's certain regulations for that.
Yeah.
And we don't want to lose that. And I know that's just a thought as I'm sitting here thinking. It's not mentioned, but there's big stipulations around it.
You know, no, but when you say that, I'm thinking, when the gentlemen are explaining, unless I'm missing something, the whole, the whole thing was that they want to do the same thing, but because they're not a government agency, they can't do it. So, so we're just trying to rezone so the same thing will be happening, and that's, yeah, that's good point.
That was my little brainwave.
Yeah, no, that's good.
But, but that's, but that's an important thing.
Certainly it is. Thanks, Mrs. Weir. Mr. Powell, did you want to speak?
Sure. So, hello everyone again. So my question is, the original transaction with GEM, and what was transpiring around that time with, obviously, they're not stupid people. As you said, they're a nationwide company. They do their homework. They wouldn't buy that property with this encumbrance unless they knew there was a damn good chance it was going to change. So I want to know, did anyone in the council have privy knowledge to that at that time with this eventuality?
I would, I know I didn't.
In the negotiations for pricing?
Actually, I'll, I'll go as far as saying this, that I was kind of a little, I wasn't a little, I was a little bit unhappy. And I said, "How can you not be able to come in and do the same thing on the same property in the same building? There's something wrong with these bylaws." And Blaze, you said it. They are, we are so bound, I know you said it respectfully, but, oh my goodness.
Right, so.
Anyway, so my answer is no. I would, I don't think anybody else knew at the table. Yeah.
Counselor Landos first, and then, oh, okay.
Just if you don't mind, Mr. Powell, just to mention, in the discussions with the original, when this whole business came up, the town of Yarmouth actively, and that can be corrected by Counselor Mooney or Counselor Mackay-Zing, when we engaged in the initial discussions with Title View, the plan was that they were going to tear it down. Former Counselor Martin Pink was very, very adamant and worked very hard to get that building, to keep it staying up as a private healthcare facility. That's the whole committee. There was a huge committee that worked very hard to keep it as a private healthcare facility as an asset to our community. There was no wheeling and dealing, there was no, everything was above board. You can look at all our minutes of our council meetings, everything was discussed, and Counselor Pink, at the time, kept us well-versed on what was going on. This company was, and it was open, we, our hope was it would become a private care facility. And what we're seeing tonight is a way that we can make this happen and to, so that we can accommodate, and I know you may not like it, seniors in this community who are going to be near a hospital, you know, but I'm sorry, they want to be near a hospital, so. But I mean, that's, that's the point that I'm making, and it gives seniors more comfort to be in a private care facility. But that's, that's, that's my recollection. Counselor Mooney can come.
Sure.
Yeah, that was.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. I was on the previous Title View Board when the transaction transpired, and there was no promise of any zoning regulations or anything else. It was a deal between the Title View Board, which was three municipal units, Yarmouth, Argyle, the municipality of Yarmouth, with representation from the Yarmouth Women's, Yarmouth Hospital Women's Auxiliary. And there was a financial transaction took place between Title View Manor and GEM. But there was no promise of rezoning or anything else.
So why would GEM buy it with that encumbrance?
I think the price was, the price was really good, and I think GEM is an organization of such financial means that even if it didn't go through the hospital, or I'm going to say the hospital complex, there still would have been money available from the provincial government to take down the building. As Counselor Mackay-Zing said, that could have been anywhere with engineering costs, and because the building is connected to the hospital, that would have taken with construction, bringing the stuff out to our facility in about the $1.5 million range.
So roll forward three years, and here we are. So I'm puzzled as to why they would, they took a gamble is what you're saying. It's what you're asking me to, to understand, is that just gambling? That's what they told you when they bought it?
Yeah, Counselor Mackay-Zing is, there was no, there's no promise of any zoning applications. And basically, what the gentleman said tonight is, we just want those guys to do the same thing that's already been, that's already been done on the site.
And that's what, can you just give me just one more?
Yeah, I thought you were on.
Everybody's on.
Oh, sorry. Okay, go ahead, and then Counselor.
Yeah, and that's just, and that's what Counselor Pink alluded to, and he stated this over, over several months, that it would be a shame to lose that building with a little refurbishment, and not, even if GEM didn't buy it, he would like to see the town of Yarmouth or the other municipal units do it to anything from, we had one time in offer, I think, from the school board to do a dormitory for foreign exchange students. And I think there might have been one other option in there that I don't remember, but there's a couple other options there, but the, the one that made the most sense financially, and I mean financially, I mean job-wise, was to continue to use it as a seniors' facility or an assisted living facility.
Thank you, worship, and just for your information, if you're looking for the information, Town of Yarmouth didn't, doesn't own that building. We're just representatives sitting on the board. And there's other municipal units that sit on the board. The people that own it are metal feels that are out there now in their new building. They were the ones that had the deal. All we said around the table was lesson to the deal, and we, we were very happy that somebody come up and wanted to buy this. So as far as the town knowing anything about passing any, any, any agreements or anything like that, no, there was nothing.
I just want to make sure it's transparent, say it's all good that you're seeing all this beautiful stuff.
Yeah, but you know, you know what? I'll also tell you this. Everything that goes on in the town of Yarmouth, we don't go knock on doors and say, "Here's what we're doing," or we don't put emails out and say, "Here's what we're doing, we're doing this and that." When we put a tender out for tires, it's in the paper. When we put tenders out for vehicles, it's in the paper. When we put things that we're going to planning, budget, planning for meetings and stuff, we put it out in the paper. We don't go knock on all, every break payer's door and say, "We're doing this, we're doing that." So that's something we don't do. And if we had to do that, it'd be, it'd be a long process, and nobody would want us to do that.
I just want to make sure you guys, from outside in, it looks a little unsene with the chronology.
Well, it is, it isn't when you really look at it. It had nothing to do with the town. Here it is now. Here it is now.
What you said enlightened the, the kind of the, I just wanted.
That's because you just didn't understand the process, that's all. And now you're understanding it now.
Well, I also see that now they're getting, I don't know what they paid for, but I bet now with this, the value's going to be going up, correct?
Well, you have to ask them. We don't own the building.
Well, they've had an encumbrance removed, so anyway.
You should, get there, you should, in all fairness, you should, you should ask them the questions because I really can't answer your questions. Not them, not them, the owners that bought the building.
Why not them?
Because they're, they're.
They're not here, they're the planners.
They're urban planners.
Urban planners.
They have no attachment.
Anyway, thank you, your worship.
You're welcome.
Planners know about property values and improvements. That's their bred matter.
Oh, I thought you, yeah, well, wow, I mean.
Obviously, the property's more valuable when it's moved into a private without an encumbrance towards a municipal use that's restrictive to a less restrictive as, as the letter to us was, this is business-friendly versus business-unfriendly. Therefore, there is value apportioned. So I would like to know the characterization of the value that is, will come into realization when this change takes place for GEM.
Can you answer that? I don't know, but wouldn't it be?
So we have an institutional, now it's going to be private, so what's the appreciation and value? He's smiling, he knows full well.
Greg, go ahead.
Oh, smiling because I don't know the answer.
Okay, good. That's good, that's honest. So, I just want that all said, so everyone's agreeing, so I just want, you know, that's my concern. Thank you all very much.
Madeline?
Yes, I just have, thank you, your worship. I just want, have one quick question for the CAO. All this will translate into just roughly how many jobs for pre-se seniors? Because I am one myself. I take some.
Oh, oh, sorry. I take some personal offense to that. I'm quite active.
Here's the answer. I'm sorry, Mr. CAO?
Yeah, so where we are with this is we have a, an assisted living facility that can't be used as an assisted living facility because the ownership has gone from not-for-profit to for-profit.
Yes.
You could have the same building, with the same staff, the same residents, the same food. You could have everything the same, but we wouldn't allow it in the town of Yarmouth. So we are not regulating use, we're regulating ownership. And that's why we're doing this, this change.
Yes.
In terms of what, how many jobs would be attached to that building in the future, that depends on what they do. Because we haven't received a development permit application at this point, which they would have to complete to tell us what their plan is. It is, it is a privately-owned building. We understand that they want to do a compatible use. We know that if they're to use that building, they'll need to purchase services from the hospital because it is connected. So we assume they want to be good neighbors. But as far as the details of their business plan and how many staff they would hire and what they would, that's not our, we have no information on that at this point.
No, no, I understand that, but we are.
But I'll say that Title View, when it was operated by the not-for-profit, I believe, and Phil, sorry, Counselor Mooney may know more about this than I, but I think the number of employees was somewhere near 100 employees.
Plus-plus a little bit.
Plus-plus a little bit. So assuming, assuming they were going to use the full capacity of the building in very same industry, I would expect they would, they would run with a similar number of employees. Maybe being a private business with a profit motive, they may look to squeeze more productivity. But I don't know if they could, but, you know, so maybe that's the range. But it really depends on how much they choose to develop, and that's their business.
Thank you very much.
And, and this is a question, just alluding to what Mr. and Mr. Powell said. Can you go property online to see what the building's assessed for?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that what it's assessed for, 250,000? Okay, so that's public information online.
Good. CAO?
Yes, and you can also see on, on viewpoint or property online what it used to be assessed at. They've recently won an appeal on the assessment because it can't be used for a commercial purpose under our bylaw. So I believe it was over a million dollars. So that's the kind of hit that, that property value took when it went from being a, a not-for-profit-owned facility to a for-profit that you can't operate. So the opportunity to increase value of the property could be in the area of a million dollars. If they make improvements to the building, it could be more than that. And that is commercially taxable assessment as opposed to what it was a few years ago, which was commercially exempt assessment.
Counselor Mooney?
So if this passes, and they go and they do their business, and they get their permits, and they set up shop, and how long does it take PVSC, which is Property Evaluation Services, how long does it take those guys to come down and reevaluate the situation and increase the, increase what it's worth?
The, every year, PVSC calls the roll the first week of December. So what that means is that they, that is the point in time at which the values are set. So if, if this amendment were, were passed, and let's suppose that they started improving their building, maybe get it up and operating, PVSC would look at it under those circumstances and put a, put a new value on it, and they do that every year.
Until it's fully operational, then they'll.
They do it every year for every property. They don't personally visit every property in the town every year, but they have formulas and, and, and I guess processes by which they set a value on every piece of property in every municipality every year.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Anyone else? Third and final, anyone else like to speak to this issue? Okay, good. Yes. Motion to adjourn this?
No.
Okay, and we'll take, let's take five minutes, just get a drink or, and we'll start our meeting. Get a drink.
Where do you live?
Out on Forest Street.
Yeah, but where, near the high school.
Yeah, past, where the last house is.
Oh.
Where the church is.
Yeah, well, I go to that big church. And they have macaroni.
Oh, Monday, the Monday, macaroni and cheese, yes.
And I heard that there was almost 200 people up there.
Is that right? I know, I see the kids coming up, like I'm right across from there.
It's really, yeah, there's, and a lot of the women there. See, I was at Kate Niggerson.
Okay.
And I've been there three years, like just church, just three years.
Yeah, so you go, you go out there to your own house, or?
No, no, but I'd like to, if they want, I could out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I've just lived.
See, I live across the street.
I've lived there a long time.
All my life.
I don't know, did you know you had a baby? A married baby, baby, and she's got a big top. Getting on, what I.
Anyway.
I used to be tour.
Yes, I used to work with Solis.
Oh, yeah.
That's where you saw me, yeah. Everybody will be from Solis.
You retired.
Yes, three years, huh?
See, I just turned 63, and I just started working. At 60, I never worked before, but I mean, I don't do a lot.
Yeah, but that's good.
But I wanted to.
Just to get out, yeah.
Yeah, I get up at 6 o'clock too.
Oh, God, not me, I stay until noon.
No, not me. What they do is they make pallets.
Okay.
For.
Yeah, for putting, like the, yeah, all the pallets that you see around.
But the staff make rocking chairs and.
Yes, all the furniture.
And stuff for, but I, I don't know if you know Philip with the helmet?
Probably I've seen him, but Jovi is my cousin's yard.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He goes to Life's Hill.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, the chairs and things are nice.
Yeah, no, I'd like to buy them.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, now they're going to have their council meeting, huh?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, but I guess I'll go home. Oh, yeah, but I guess I'll go home.
She didn't seem to mind though. That's right? Yeah, you as well, thank you for coming out. That's not ours. No, no, she's put it on the desktop there. So, hopefully that's not a log.
See you later.
See you later. We're just going to the back of the room. We're not leaving yet. We've got to watch the room.
Yeah, what is it? Oh, this guy. Where, I've seen Nasty. Oh, they do. I'm going to see what you have more of.
I got to talk to you, buddy.
Did you get your clothes, Josh? Good. Are you cold?
I'm freezing cold.
Can I hug you, can I hug you?
The breath that comes straight in from outside the door.
Can I hug you and make it warm? You want my coat?
Okay. We're going to get started again. Got to get my right, right paperwork out here. No, we can't shut those. Has to be an open meeting. Okay. We'll call the regular town council meeting to order. We'll stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot law. In all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see the earth. The true north strong and free. From fire and water, Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. The keep our end. Lord, awesome free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
declarations of conflict of interest? Not yet. Approval of agenda additions or deletions? Counselor? I'm just going to go to him for, yeah, Counselor Landry?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to add, if we have time, two items within our very brief. Wood chipper at the Solid Waste Park and Milton Dam. I'd like to have a report on that for the committee of the whole.
I'm going to put those under twelve A and twelve B. Milton Dam. We're going to order, we're, we're going to order breakfast. Counselor Mooney, we're going to order breakfast right before yours.
Beautiful. Funding.
Certainly.
And advisory council on heritage property. If we have time.
It's not on here, but I, I just want to say something before we get started. I just have a quick statement and if everybody's okay with that. Huh? No, it's a, but it's a line out of it. And it's, yes, C A O?
Your worship, I'd like to delete item nine E, surplus equipment.
Okay.
And, your worship, I, I, just in case councillors weren't aware, in our town council means bylaw, we do have an eleven o'clock curfew. And the only way we can go past eleven o'clock is by, I believe it's unanimous consent of council to continue.
I don't think we'll be able to say unanimous at eleven. You know what? Then, then, then let's say it quickly. We'll, I think we can work through this relatively quickly if we give it, give it a good go. So, and any more additions or deletions?
Moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any just questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. I, I just, I just want to say this before we get started and, and it'll be very brief. I did my mayor's report and I'm not going to read it all, but there's something that I need to, to say out of it before we start. Yes, yes, you, you can. Go ahead.
If you don't read it all, it is, it is online and it is in the paper usually. So, if, if we don't get through it tonight, people can still, still do it.
But it is online, it's in the newspaper.
But I just wanted to let people know that they can still see it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to read the, the first six or seven lines, and I, and I started this today. "As I sit here at my desk which overlooks our beautiful harbor and more aware of ever than the, of the toil that we've been through in the past four years. We've each been touched by the desperate impact of losing a vital industry. We've seen businesses close, families leave and lives change. We can't change the past, but we can, we can learn from it and brace what's before us. Today, we celebrate the fact that resilience and hope trump pessimism and any other barrier. But that didn't just happen. Our ship has come in and it really didn't just happen." This is the part that's most important to me. "We're here today as a result, sorry, of a sheer guts determination, belief and teamwork. We're here today with a ship in our harbor because former mayor Phil Mooney, former warden Leland Anthony, warden Aldrick Dontrmont and their respective teams dug their heels in for the fight of a lifetime. And I want the minutes of this meeting to reflect the work they started and we're here today because they started it."
Thank you, your worship.
It was short and sweet, but.
You can say it again.
But you know, you know what though? I won't say it again, but I hope no one ever forgets that the end of the journey is a party and it's, and it's great, but the beginning of the journey is the real work where you have to have the fortitude to do what it takes. So, from me to you and, and everybody that was at this table and your teams before, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee of the whole, March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Moved and seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I'm not going to look up, so if you have a nay, speak never, ever, ever hold your peace. Committee, not a yay. Committee of the whole, April second, two thousand fourteen. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, March twentieth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Moved? And seconded?
Seconded, buddy.
All right. Any further discussion? Question from, by Counselor Landry?
And I don't mean to, just a little minor thing, I was trying to dig it up on my computer here and I feel like a former deputy mayor when he had a little problem. There was an error in the times at eight-thirty of two motions and I think it's just a typo just maybe should be corrected.
Are, are we in twentieth or the second there?
The second, I believe it is. Anyway, I'll pass it on to Linda there, but, so it should be within amended time, okay?
Good. So, we are going to have a motion to approve with the amended time? Okay, so moved by Counselor Dawes, seconded. Any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, March twentieth, two thousand fourteen. I just did that. Committee of the whole, March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Moved? Seconded? Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions been called by a few individuals, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Presentation. We have a presentation by Superintendent Troy Foot, Central Nova Scotia Correctional Facility. Welcome, Mr. Foot. We're just going to make sure the microphone's ready for you.
I can object, would that be okay?
It's not for us, it's for the, the viewers, for the internet.
That are watching, yes. Your worship, to you, through you, to the councillors and all residents of the town of Yarmouth, the Southwest Correctional Facility, we're celebrating a milestone this month. Milestones are an important part of all of our lives. It gives us a brief moment in time to reflect where we've been, where we are, where we're going. And part of reflection and part of our celebration is we want it to be here to celebrate and acknowledge the partnership that we've experienced with the great town of Yarmouth and all the residents over the last ten years. So, I would like to present to you on behalf of the councillors and the residents a plaque.
Oh, wow.
And it simply is a Department of Justice logo and it says, "Celebrating ten years of continued support with the town of Yarmouth." And it's just to acknowledge that that is a partnership that we're proud of and we, we see it going forward in leaps and bounds and so on.
Perfect. Counselor Landry, why don't you come up with? Yes. Okay, okay. We will, before we get into the business, we'll, we'll do the, the business arising. Before we get into the business, we'll do the advisories for, for the gentleman from, Jennifer, still here? And the public? Yeah, there they are.
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's okay. All right, so that was nice. Okay. Okay. I know, and you know what? But I have to say this, you know, I did, I asked him twice, I said, "Are you okay?" And he said, "It's great to see business being taken care of." So, that's... That's good.
Lex says 10 years, two and a half hours.
Okay. Budget. CAO? Please don't say what budget. Go ahead.
So, your worship, the council went through a three-month budget process this year that began with setting goals and strategies and incorporating costs related to those within our budget package. We approved a capital budget already, which is a first for the town of Yarmouth to get it done that early. We've approved our grants to organizations at April 1st, so that is also good news for the organizations. The last piece to be done is the operating budget and the operating budget is available on our last Committee of the Whole meeting. It was recommended to council. Now, we will require a motion and I will read through what the motion needs to be for your benefit. It is attached, this entire document, and then it would require a mover and a seconder. So, the motion would be that council accept a budget with revenues in the amount of $16,836,149 and expenses of $16,809,920 for an overall surplus of $26,299 for its general operations for the year ended March 31, 2015, which provides for the following rates. Residential, $1.74 per hundred of assessment. Commercial property, $4.45 per hundred of assessment. That is down $0.06 from last year. Resource general, $1.74 per hundred of assessment. And farmland, $2.16 per acre. Garbage collection and processing fees remain unchanged at $155 per dwelling unit for residential, up to a maximum of four dwelling units per building. And in excess of four dwelling units is deemed commercial and at the owner's expense. Retail and other commercial type operators are deemed commercial and at the owner's expense. We have pollution control charges and these have been adjusted this year in accordance with our five-year rate phase-in. Five-eighths inch is $33.60. Three-quarter inch, $48.55. One inch, $80.91. Inch and a half, $161.82. Two inch, $258.91. That's $258.91. Three inch would be $517.83. Four inch, $809.10. Six inch would be $1,618.21. And eight inch would be $2,912.78 and those are quarterly base rates. The effluent rate, which would be the variable component, would be $2.39.3 cents per thousand imperial gallons. And so, that is based on the water consumption. These are sewer rates based on the water consumption. The interest rate for the town of Yarmouth would be 14% per annum, be charged on delinquent accounts. And the chief administrative officer will implement the inherent recommendations, administer and control the operating budget, and report to council as appropriate. And all of the estimates that we have reviewed at the last Committee of the Whole are the underlying document to this and would be part of that motion.
Counselor Dawes?
Too late.
He's not... Discussion?
Yes. No, it is too late. I followed protocol, I put my light on. I was corrected at the last meeting.
Yeah, you were, right next to them.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay. I don't think I've answered the lights for the motions, but I never call for the question until I answer the light. Does that help? Okay. Moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. We have us a budget. And I will say, the way that it was done... Thank you, CAO. And thank you to the entire team because it was a really good process with the priorities and it was really good. Okay? Second reading, property tax exemption bylaw, CAO?
Thank you, worship. This is actually a low-income exemption bylaw, so what we did, you can see the amendments in this bylaw. And so, this is second reading. If anyone from... This would be an appropriate time, your worship, if anyone from the audience wished to make comment. The gist of this bylaw amendment is that we are increasing the maximum family income from $21,000 to $25,000. So, any household which earns less than $25,000 would be entitled to apply for a partial exemption for the property taxes or a grant towards the property taxes. The maximum amount of that grant is being increased from $500 to $750 and we have provided for a budget of $30,000 this year for these grants. And so, your worship, it would be an appropriate time to call for any public comment.
Okay. Would anyone like to comment on this? Counselor McCausick?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to thank Jeff and my colleagues around the table, especially to Jeff. And I know you're getting a little bit of praise tonight and I don't want that to swell your head up any bigger than it is now, but... You brought this up at our meetings and it was your suggestion that we increase this for the ratepayers. And it was a really good suggestion and all the... My colleagues around the table agreed that it should be up more for the person out there that is, you know, that has on fixed income. So, I salute you for bringing this forward and it's a great, great idea and I will support this. And thanks again.
Counselor Mooney?
And just to add, to Counselor McCausick, I too will support the motion. It's a great motion and help a select few in our community that need the most help. And if anybody doesn't know, we budgeted $30,000 over the last several years for low-income earners to access to and we only gave out or only accessed was about $16,000. So, there's still a large amount of money that was in that budget item that I would like to see eaten up and in use. That's really good. Keeps people in their homes and I think that's what it was designed for. Thank you to yourself and Jerry for the good work on that and CAO.
Good. Anyone else in the audience? Last call? Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading. Moved by Counselor Dawes, seconded by Counselor Dennis. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Taxi bylaw, first reading. CAO?
So, your worship, the Policy and Bylaw Review Committee went through this bylaw a couple of times and the solicitor has as well and made a number of suggested amendments. They're peppered throughout the document. The primary... Sorry, excuse me. The primary reason that we went ahead with this one is that we had on the books in this bylaw a taxi commission, which was largely made up of members of the taxi society, which no longer exists. And so, we could not effectively have a meeting of the taxi commission because it couldn't have membership under the old bylaw. So, we've updated the bylaw so that operators and drivers and business owners in taxi limousine business can have representation on an advisory committee to council. And we've... I guess we brought it up to date and the amendments are before you for consideration for first reading. If first reading... If a motion of first reading passes, we would then proceed to a public hearing at the next council meeting.
Good. So, moved on the first reading?
Second.
And moved and seconded? Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Motion for regional government, Counselor Mooney?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make the following motion, that the town of Yarmouth requests to support liaison person from Service Nova Scotia Municipal Relations for discussions on regional government with the municipality of Yarmouth and any other municipal unit, i.e. Argyle or Clare. And if I have a seconder, I'd like to speak to the motion, please. Your worship, I think it's not to force anything on anybody, but we have a great support person in our municipal liaison person, is Chris McNeil, who worked with the municipality of Queens when they did regional government or they shared some services and came together. And I'd like to see Mr. McNeil involved with the talks. I think he can only help add to the equation. There's a lot of misconceptions and myths about what regional government is and what amalgamation is and I think with the support staff that's already in place, that's not gonna cost the taxpayers any more money, I think Mr. McNeil can lend a different eye to the situation. I think if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Gushu, that Chris is the municipal rep for the municipality of Yarmouth?
CAO?
Chris McNeil is the rep from Digby all around to Halifax.
Okay. So, it's not adding another layer of government or another cost to the taxpayers. It's somebody that's already in place that can lend an ear and maybe a helping hand. So, it's not forcing anything on anybody, but I'd like to see him at the table. That's what the motion encompasses. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Your worship, when I first was considering offering for election as a counselor, this was one of the... Probably the uppermost thing in my mind. And I'm generally in support of Counselor Phil's motion. Couple of questions. If we have a municipal, a provincial municipal person work with us and we arrive at a conclusion in which there are some changes made, we would be obligated to make those changes. It's my understanding.
If we... No. Not if we have him work with us. If we have the government pay for a study, then we would be more obligated to live by what that study said.
Okay. And secondly, I know that the CAOs and the mayor and wardens of the three municipal units have been meeting and discussing regularly and attempting to find ways to save dollars. And so, I'm interested in maybe a response from Jeff if it's appropriate, just for discussion, for information on the motion.
Go ahead.
Firstly, I'll say that Mr. McNeil is very qualified to help us in that process as a former staff member of region... Sorry, Queens County or municipality of Queens that amalgamated with Liverpool. I've known Chris for about 30 years and very comfortable with his skill set to be able to help facilitate those discussions. So, I think it's a great idea. And we did have a brief discussion with him here one day about that. We lead the province in terms of intermunicipal partnerships in this area. And I recently updated my list and we have 21 partnerships that we have with the other neighboring municipalities in Yarmouth County. And so, it would be... It is a continuing process to find more and we're adding more all the time and we'll add hopefully another one tonight. But, yeah, I have no issue at all. I think it's a great suggestion and I expect Mr. McNeil to engage enthusiastically.
So, go ahead, Counselor.
And just to add what the deputy mayor was talking about and then what you discussed is the problems that came up with Picto and Kings County is they were bound, I think, by the governance study. So, whatever came out of that study, they were bound to do. And I think that's what was the downfall with some of the units in Picto County. I would like to do this, if we're gonna do amalgamation, let's do it on our own terms. We have a great working relationship with our other three municipal units and I'd like to see that continued. Like the CAO said, we share 21 services now with the other municipal units and we have an opportunity to do it again a little farther down on the agenda. So, if there's gonna be an amalgamation, Mr. McNeil's a great guy to put in place. It's not an added cost to the taxpayers. It's something that he already does and he already was... Worked for Queens County when they amalgamated. So, I think it's just another layer, another comfort zone that he can lend a helping hand. And it's not... I don't think it's forcing anything on the other municipal units since he's already the municipal rep for those units. So, I think it's just goes hand in hand. We have to streamline, like we said earlier here tonight and the Powell said it, we're getting less and less population and we need less government. So, I think it's a great step and I think it's something that's gonna happen, Jim. I don't know if it's gonna be this election, but it's gonna happen in the next couple of years. So, I hope everybody supports the motion, your worship.
I will... I just wanna reiterate what Counselor Mooney's saying, that this is not by any means suggesting we're going to do anything. We're just... We just need to be able to look and say, you know, which way do we go? And what are the optics of everything? And having somebody like that sit at the table would be perfect. And so, not putting the cart before the horse or anything like that. It's all... I do support the motion.
You have ongoing discussions with the municipality and Argyle.
Yeah. And we, right now, are in the middle of discussing the shared services and how to pull that together even tighter. So, this is just... I see it as in addition to. If we're looking at shared services, we can... We're certainly willing, as I understand it from our meeting, we're willing to look at what it would look like to, you know, to do other options, whether it's called amalgamation or more shared services or regional government. So, we... Someone at the table that can help us work through that with no strings attached is a good thing. So, go ahead, deputy?
One final comment. I'm in support. In the process, we should be also doing some visioning too, just to...
Absolutely.
We have a long-term... We have short-term goals, which we've been working at diligently. And we need to have a look at a long-term vision, which I think might make it more interesting for the... Our fellow municipal units to participate with us more aggressively.
Exactly. Okay? Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions been... Oh, I'm sorry. Did... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Somebody in the audience want to ask a question?
Another question? No. So, I've been doing shared services work for 15 years globally, so I can speak to the risks of this type of initiative, that you lose autonomy typically. Backing out of it is next to impossible. It's usually technologically is what causes that and the funding that requires to, how do I say? De-engineer a shared services model. So, as Counselor McLeod said, give this great pause, understand what the backup options are, what the cost of that. Do they have a backup option? How easy is that? What's their backup plan? Things like that. So, I would be also concerned about the agility of you doing business in the future if something were to happen. There would be a re-engineering cost that you would not be able to probably bear because it's a large system you're now dealing with and that would be next to impossible or overly costly. So, you would, again, lose autonomy. So, I would advise great amount of reserve and constraint in stepping down this path. It's very difficult to back out of it, next to impossible.
Thank you. Okay? Anyone else? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. So, let's go to... Where are we? Oh, there we are. Okay. Citizen Advisory Committees. Deputy Mayor? Are you there? You will be in a second, I know. We gotta jump ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
You're looking for the motions from the Committee of the Whole? Oh, the citizens?
From planning, yeah. Yes, yes. B. Planning Advisory. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor?
Recommendations to a council from the public hearing of earlier this evening. I move to amend the land use bylaw... I move to amend the land use bylaw, in particular, the zoning map, Schedule A, thereby rezoning a portion of 126 Brunswick Street from open space to low-density residential as outlined in our planner's report.
So moved?
I moved.
Yeah. Did you second? Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor.
Your worship, it was a very lengthy and very lively public hearing tonight, and really, like Counselor Dennis summed it up, the input from the residents was really, really, really good. I have spent a lot of time the last few days going through that area. I walk, back in my walking cycle like Counselor Mooney, and what has struck me on this is that when I look at 105 Brunswick Street, we have a duplex. When I go up Elm Street, we have a duplex, and frankly, it's pretty unsightly, in my opinion, with all due respect to the owners, it's got gravel all over front, and it's, you know, to me, it's not even a lawn there, and I feel, you know, I feel et cetera, et cetera. And I know the deputy mayor's been around the block on this, and these buildings have been built, and I have not, I've been on this council now for eight years, I've never heard a single squeak of complaint about those duplexes. I think I counted four or five of them within a stone's throw of Milton School, former Milton School property. That concerned me. And I, where there has not been great opposition, but apparently this one has sparked a lot of angst and a lot of concern, rightfully so, and I understand, I, and people are concerned about property values. Well, my property has plummeted because the schools have been closed. I've got no control, your worship, in five years, there could be a slum tenement next across the road to me, and I may not like it, but there's not much I can do about it. We have an opportunity here for development, and I know people don't like seniors, anxiety of these people moving into the community, and I, I take it offensive, I'm offended by it, because, in fact, it was ironic, because one of the speakers tonight is a retired person that's moved back to the area to live, for the exact reason that we were talking about, because it's, it's a beautiful area to live. So I have no problem seconding the motion on this at all. I, I'm fully supportive. Here's a development, we have a chance to build up our tax base, these are not unsightly buildings, and the developer is one of the best landlords in this area. This is a guy that's put a lot of effort into our community, he's been a major force. This guy deserves a lot of credit, and I'm quite excited that this is happening. Yeah, people may not like the construction, they may not like it, but to me, it's good. The parkland, we met this morning, Counselor Dawes, myself, Counselor Dennis, and Counselor Mooney, we went and we went with the Milton Improvement Society, we showed them basically an outline of what's going on. We did clarify up some of the misconception, I mean, there's still some concerns, and people aren't happy to see the six feet by, and the CAO, I'm sorry there, Jeff, I forgot to mention you, and Rodney Doucette was there, and our GIS technician, crazy upstairs. And it was presented to them, and I know people weren't happy, but at least there was better communication, and at least people understood. I think we should go ahead with this, I have no problem with it, I'll be very blunt. If, and I'll go on the record saying this, if, if for some reason Central School is going to be closing, you know, eventually, and this is going to happen probably to the Central School, and I'd have no problem with it. I mean, I live in the Heritage District, and we've got a big old barn of a house, and if they're going to put these up, I personally would have no problem. Now, it was mentioned to your worship tonight that these property values, that property values will drop because of duplexes going in. I did a lot of research on this. There's been one thesis that's been done of recently, I think it was 2012, in Minnesota somewhere, where this lady did in a very small, little community, research into dropping par property values, and she found some linkages in one particular community. However, if you go on major sites like Habitat and other sites, they're very critical of the stereotyping that people have, that these little buildings, units, this is affordable housing. You know, people cannot afford to build a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home today, if, you can't do it. People can't build, my, my son in Cedar Lake struggling with a hundred-thousand mortgage, you know what I mean, in Cedar Lake, he'd love to live in the town of Yarmouth, but he can't live in the town of Yarmouth because he just can't afford a property. I don't think, there's no research that I've seen, other than this one thesis, and it was forwarded, a couple others were forwarded tonight, there are other factors than duplexes. There is other building conditions. There's buildings in view of that school, your worship, that are heck of a lot more unsightly than these new buildings that are going to be going up there. Now, I agree, there was some concern about previous council and the honesty and whatever, whatever, I'm not saying dishonest, but I'm simply saying I agree that there was discussion by previous council, and we, we did it, but this council has done its diligence, your worship. We have done our diligence. We've tried to sell that land. One of our priorities that our council has set is to stabilize and increase our tax base, and by letting this project go ahead, we're going to have, how much, CAO, would be assessed value that we'd have additional adding to the tax base with those units? Do you have, got a ballpark figure?
Fourteen thousand, five hundred.
Fourteen thousand?
Is that right? CAO?
Yeah, so there's, so there's income coming in, so there's income, so there'll be an income coming in, and that could go. And one comment I will add, and then I'll shut up. What really bothers me the most, and it's a concern, is that this would be park number four in Milton. Center town has one park, and I ask you, where do we have a park in Yarmouth South? We don't. We don't have a, we have the playground there, but we don't have a, a walking park, and I mean, Milton residents are blessed, they have the Coronation Park, which this town has, has worked on, they have the Rotary Park, which does need some work, and we're looking at that, they have the Milton Park, which is beautiful, and now we're building a fourth park with, with them. South End has a treatment plant, yeah, that's the park we have, you know? I really think we have to balance the town more, and then one of the reasons I'm, I'm supporting this is I'd love to see any money we're going to put in our parks going to Yarmouth South. I'd like to see us looking, we have some hunks of land down there that we can do something with, and we've already been playing with that a bit, I know in one particular deal on the waterfront that we've been talking about a little bit. So at least we can give the residents of Yarmouth South something, because it's a little bit of an imbalance, so I'm definitely going to support this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Dawes.
Thank you, your worship. I think we're getting just a little, little off topic, and I'm only saying that because, as you like to say, tick, tick-tock, it is already ten o'clock. I do believe that this motion addresses the wishing to change the zoning of that, of that area from open space to low density. I will support that. I, in fact, I was here, and I took part in, in okaying the vote of the purchase of the additional six, six feet for more than valid reasons. Architectural, whether there's a duplex, I'm certain, we all are very familiar with the developer himself, he is more than, he's more than there for, for the customer, for the town, and if anyone here wants to take on, take on a bet, you'll lose if someone were to walk up to him tomorrow and say, "I want to build, I want you to build me a Victorian, a grand Victorian lady on this lot," he'll do it. But that is not the question at this moment, we are here to, to, to vote on the changing from open space to R1.
I just had one more come, which I did forget, and I think I was on top, because this all deals with the park area, the, because that's what the six, that's what the six feet, Counselor, well, isn't the six feet, isn't what the whole discussion tonight was, it was about the six feet being moved? Am I wrong? Am I wrong? Is that not what it was?
This is about changing the zoning from those six feet, from open space to R1, that's what this is about. That's all.
Well, that's my, my point.
That's tonight.
My point was exactly on that, that was the whole point that I was trying to raise with you, and to give support to it, and I think I'm entitled to at least speak and give support, I don't think I was on top.
I didn't say you were.
In fact, well, you said you were getting on top, and I wasn't, but I had one.
No, this evening.
Oh, this evening.
This evening.
Okay. I just have one more point. Your worship, just one thing to add, I just.
Apologize, but this should be seen as an opportunity. Mister, the developer I know would be more than willing to, and I can't put words in his mouth, but I do know the man personally, as an individual, he's my former boss, he probably tried to fire me a couple of times in retrospect, but the developer is the kind of person who I know would work with the community to put, to work with that park area, and I think they should approach him, and they should work with him, and I know whatever we can do in our communities in Bloom Committee, we will definitely cooperate in any way to help bring this to fruition, so it should be seen as an opportunity, not a, a negative thing.
Okay. Okay?